For Tuesday, November 4, 2025, regular commission meeting, I have 6:03. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll for us?
Meagro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samira.
Yeah.
Commissioner Angela.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Huntington.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's see the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, everyone, so let's go ahead and move on to additions, deletions, and withdrawals from our agenda. Do we have any from the Commission this evening?
The only one that I have is in reference to what we usually have waving bids. We used to put, we usually put, sorry, we usually put out bids. So I would like to, you know, know why we're going to try to waive that one. So that might be the only item. And that's just more of questions that can be answered. I don't know if that can be discussed now or...
You're talking about 10A?
Yeah, 10A. Yeah, the other ones I'm okay with is just it's, we put out for bids and, you know.
I have few myself.
Okay, so right now I have 10A. Commissioner?
10A, 10B, 10C, 10H, 10I, moving out for discussion as well with a 10E.
Can you repeat that, Commissioner?
Yes, so 10A, 10B, 10C, 10H, 10I, 10E, moving out for discussion. Then I am asking to defer 10J, 10K, and 10L, which are the minutes, right? If we can defer them, so I have the time to read them since we got them last night. And there is an item for discussion, new business, that's my item, discussion item tree protection, that I would like to move to my Commissioner report. Pull out of the discussion.
Let me just make sure I have it correct. That was 14D, right?
Yes.
Discussion, all right, so I have 10A, B, C, E, H, and I. I have...
An E, right?
Yeah, A, B, C, E, H, and I.
Okay.
And then I have moved to, I guess, next agenda, defer JK and L.
Mm-hmm.
And then pull, move 14D up to report. Is that right?
That right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other additions, deletions, or withdrawals? Are you done? Okay. All right, so do I have a first and a second to approve the agenda as it's been amended?
A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The... Make sure I have these correct. Okay. Um, all right, so that's four. Our next item is, item number five, our presentations. We have one presentation here, and it's our good representative from Great Waste. How are you? All right, one second. It doesn't sound like that's on. You got a button?
Hello.
There it is.
Got it. There you go.
Beautiful.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, Commission, Village Manager, Village Attorney, Village Clerk, Village Community, and Staff. Willie Hernandez, 8500 Ardok Road, Miami Lakes. I am the Contract Manager for Great Waste and Recycling. We are your garbage provider here for the past five years. And on August 18th, we were acquired by Waste Connections. However, we're all working with Waste Connections to make a sure, smooth transition. And we just want the city to know how important this is to us and how important it is to the organization. Waste Connections purchased Great Waste. So the entity continues forward. And we're going to continue operating just as we have for the, for the staff, for the members of this community. When I came here four or five years ago, six years ago, whatever time is, years are going by so quick, we knew the situation we were in. And we were, thank God, we were able to come and clean the city streets, make sure the piles got cleaned up, converted the services to all new containers. And we went, we went out of our way, we go out of our way. I have with me today Mark Wexler, the manager of operations for the governmental side of it. And there's just one thing we want to tell you. We want to come to you as a, this was, we have here a real public-private partnership. And it was being part of your community that trained us, that we also had to be part of the community. And one of the key things is, we never came here with the intention but to do a good job. And when you have good things in your mind and good things in your heart, you always come out doing good. And I drove through the city today. I spent an hour out there. And I got to be dead honest with you. I got video from prior, I got video current. And it's, it's a completely different city. By the way, it's drop-dead gorgeous. You all know it because you live here or work here. But I do want to say on behalf of Great Waste and Recycling Services LLC, which he is now owns it, that we are totally endeared to you. He doesn't own it. His company owns it, okay? We're totally endeared to you. And you have our numbers and our contacts from the parks to the commissioners that know me and, and dealt with me and, and saw what we did to come here and create what we feel so proud of, which is a public-private partnership that brings us very happy to let you know that everything's going to stay the same. And we're going to continue forward. As a matter of fact, all the same staff is still here, including me. But I'll let Mark say a few words, so you know.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Village Manager, Village Attorney, Village Clerk, and Community and Staff. My name is Mark Wexler. I'm here representing Waste Connections. We're the third-largest solid waste provide, services provider in the country. And like Willie said, we acquired Great Waste. We have approximately $9 billion in annual sales, 24,000 employees, and over 10,000 pieces of equipment. What does that mean to you folks? You have a relatively small village. What that means is we have the resources to do whatever we need to do to satisfy you guys in accordance with the contract. So we're here to take over, work with Willie, and basically work together to continue on the success that they've had. And I'll be more than happy to send each of you my contact information. I am the Contract Manager. And I basically communicate between the village and our management team. So eventually, you know, you'll have your own operation supervisor. The one that's there now, we're going to maintain. So basically, nothing changes from the way you see it. But we do have the resources to replace trucks. The other thing we do, which I always bring up, is being a large public company, if, if there's ever a hurricane, we have what we call a blue team that comes in from throughout the country, comes in with trucks, crew, and everything else. If for some reason our equipment gets damaged. So that's a major advantage of being with a large service provider. And so that's pretty much it. I can give you a lot of numbers, facts, and figures, but I don't think you want to hear that tonight. But let me just state one thing. I've been with the company for 12 years. We have value principles, safety, integrity, accountability, and to be the best solid waste company out there. So we, those are our value principles established by our CEO. And we have, our main office here in South Florida is in Hialeah. We also have another office in Opelika, and we have several disposal facilities throughout Miami-Dade County.
Well, thank you very much for being here with us. So the way we normally handle presentations is if there's any, you know, we try to keep it concise if we can, is, is, you know, give commissioners a chance to ask, you know, a question before we move on. So I would only have one question for both you gentlemen is, does the acquisition by Waste Connections in any way change or alter the services that are being offered to the residents here in Biscayne Park?
This is, or we would be assuming the same services that they provide. And hopefully try and improve some things if we could. If not, we'll just continue on the way it's going. We have no intention of changing anything operationally.
So can we get, get you to lock in for no price increases for the next 100 years?
I don't have the authority to do that. Follow the contract, whatever that says.
I just have one other question. You know, we, we, at all municipalities down here in Miami-Dade, it experienced an increase in service costs because of the loss of the incinerator site in South Miami. I don't know, I think there was a plan in place and the county's working on, on trying to figure out another way to address that. Is there any movement or any, or any plans on Waste Connection's side on, on how to mitigate the loss of that site for, for your, your clients?
I could speak to that briefly. I don't, I'm not intimately involved in it, but I can tell you that we have our own transfer station in Hialeah. We used to have a recycling facility. We just leveled the recycling facility to make room for train. We also have two landfills in Northern Florida. So we are setting up, we're working with Miami-Dade County to help them. We are a Miami-Dade County approved transfer station. So we're able to take in Miami-Dade, Miami-Dade waste into our transfer station. And our plans, we're making plans right now to train it, rail it all the way up to our landfill, which is going to be more sustainable, it's going to not have to deal with trucks and things like that. We're just going to rail it all the way directly up to our landfill. So, and we are one of two approved facilities, us and our competitor Waste Management.
Understood. Well, I appreciate you fielding questions out of left field. I'll just...
That's an easy one.
Ask the rest of the commissioners if they have any other questions.
I have a question, and I hope I can explain this right. When we used to have Waste Pro, and we had, I think, the last hurricane that we, can't remember, the last hurricane we had. And we had used that area out there. And Waste Pro would say they couldn't handle our situation because they have to take care of another city. You're not going to do that to us, sir. I hope I explained that right.
Well, generally, there's a contract for storm debris. So you, you probably have a contract for a storm debris hauler. Basically, we don't deal with the storm debris, but we help clean out the area prior to the hurricane. That's one of the things that we try to do. But we, we don't handle the storm debris. There's certain things that you need to do with that, you know, in order to get your money from FEMA and so forth. I'm not an expert on that, so I really can't give you a lot of detail, but that's basically what I know.
Well, I think what I was getting at the area is that when we have, you'll be around for when we have the hurricane and get, pick up our garbage, and we're not going to have any delays. I think that's what I was getting at more.
We'll do our best to pick up whatever, whatever we can. If the winds go over, I think it's 35 miles an hour sustained winds, it's unsafe to operate our, our high-profile trucks.
Right.
So at that point, we'd have to bring them in. But we would do our best to clean up the area prior to that.
To answer your question, the, in ESU knows, we have a, a roll-off container at the Public Works Yard. So if they're, like, in a pinch of time or a situation that we, you know, just need, of course, you have that container, which we can turn that around in an emergency situation. When, when it comes to the emergency management side of things and storms, thank God we're in November, and that one went that way because I didn't want my landscaping on my house to get damaged. But that, that would be something that could be discussed, but you always have the infrastructural support. And with, with Waste Connections owning their own landfills and owning transfer stations and owning rail cars, changes the whole picture. One of the biggest problems being a private, family-owned and operated company for Great Waste is we had to depend on the county infrastructural support for disposal. When the plant burned down, the county was in the hot, they had nowhere to go. And so they had to sign a contract with Waste Management to put our garbage out of the Medley landfill, which if you go by the Palmetto, look to your right, you'll see it. It's, it's, it's almost to the moon. And it's, both the North Dade landfill and the South Dade landfill are operating under NOVs right now. They're to capacity. So garbage is a real problem. And it's not just collecting it, it's getting rid of it. So with, with a company like Marx, they have that capability of, of moving by rail or to their landfill in certain spots and clearly understand, we take our public-private partnerships very seriously. When it comes to our clients, you come first. So it's not going to be, you know, somebody over there calls and says, hey, Willie, I need your help, or Mark, I need my help. No, it's going to be our cities we're going to take care of, like we always have. As a matter of fact, when we had little, little situations here previously, we jumped right to it. We took care of you guys. So that's not changing.
Because with me for, I want, I mean, I respect other cities, but I don't care about other cities. I care about the residents of Biscayne Park. And if there's a storm, I want their garbage picked up, as equally as you would do for another city. If you're saying that, as you was explaining, sometimes you can't do that, that's not a problem. But if you're treating North Miami one way and you're treating us another way, with all due respect, I don't care what happens in North Miami, other cities. I only care about the residents of Biscayne Park. I want to be sure that in a hurricane storm, our garbage is picked up.
Right, it is, and it will be. The municipal solid waste is one portion of it. And when you get vegetation, that's a whole nother portion. But you will be on your regular schedule, as Mark had stated, if the weather gets above 35...
No, I understand that.
These trucks...
No, I understand that.
... rules and regulations, we can't operate, just like you guys can't operate. Or law enforcement has to be careful themselves.
No, I understand. And that's, like I said, that's my concern is because we have had in the past where we didn't get the service that we deserved because they had to handle North Miami and other cities.
With me.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say, I already told you the company that it was with Waste Pro. It was the last time, it was the last time I was on the commission, remember that happened?
I know, I know.
So that's all I'm concerned about is that you treat Biscayne Park, Biscayne Park, not North Miami and the other cities, okay?
And I'm here to give my assurances, like I did today, you gave me an opportunity to work with you, that this is a true public-private partnership, and we're part of the community, and we're going to do you a good job, like we always have. We have never let you down, and that will continue forever.
Okay, I mean, I am, I am happy, I am happy with your service. Don't get me wrong, but I just want, in case God, we didn't have a hurricane this time. And I was on the commission the last time Waste Pro was here and the problems that we went through. Waste Pro, and even with the other company, with what you were talking about, that other company wasn't Waste Pro, it was somebody else. But I remembered Waste Pro, and I just want to be sure that the residents of Biscayne Park are treated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is like Birdines or like Macy's, so, to us, so, that's how we feel.
Thank you for your presentation.
It's like Key Biscayne too. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for coming. I appreciate it, Mark. Nice meeting you as well. And the best part of the whole speech was that nothing is changing. That's, as long as that happens, we're good. Thank you so much.
They, we're going to be using their trucks to cruise. At some point, if they need to be replaced, we will replace them. You're welcome.
I'll echo what the Commissioner said. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here tonight, and welcome to Biscayne Park. We look forward, forward to working with you.
Thank you. Everything's going to stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you as well. I think the questions were already, yeah. No, no problem. My questions were already raised by the rest of the Commission, so thank you for being here. All I wanted to ask is, when was this merge? When did the merge happen? Okay, so it's very recent.
Yeah.
All right.
Commissioner, to come back, it was that we were planning on coming here earlier, but with the transition and everything, and then...
I understand.
I think we had a little storm or something happen, and we just said, let's just do it. The next meeting, we'll come and...
No, thank you for, for, for being here and representing the company. And then the fact the staff, and you answered that before, I could ask, it's going to remain the same, puts us in a good place because they, they know us, I think, so, thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all, and thank you for being, giving us the opportunity to be part of your community.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for the time and thanks for being with us tonight. All right, having concluded our presentations, let's move on to our public comment. So we'll start with a public comment here in the log cabin, and then we will move on to Zoom. For all those with us, public comment is limited to three minutes, and please provide us with your name and address before you begin. And we'll start with individuals in the log cabin.
Mayor, as a point of order, I just didn't see a link for the Zoom. Where...
If you go on, so if you go onto the calendar, let me pull it up. Under the calendar, if you go to the 6 o'clock meeting,
Yeah.
and you scroll down on that pop-up, it'll say, "Join Zoom Meeting."
Got it.
And the meeting ID and passcode is there too.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Hey, Brad. Please.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I know I had let you all know that I was, I was traveling today. I'm, I'm back in town, and I will be on the meeting remotely. You have my colleague Alan Boalow that's sitting at the dais in my place. And I'm just asking if you still need the assistance of Mr. Boalow, or can I appear remotely and do the village attorney duties remotely for tonight?
I personally have no problem with, with you being on remote, Brad. I don't know that we need Alan here with us unless he would like to stay with us. But I'd certainly ask the rest of the Commission. Fine with it? Rest of the Commission okay with that?
Yes.
All good? Okay. Well, Alan, thanks so much for coming down and joining us. It was a pleasure. Thank you. Brad, thank you for the update as well, so we didn't hold Alan hostage.
No worries. I appreciate it. Thank you for accommodating.
All right, great. And just on the point of Commissioner Angela, you mentioned the Zoom link. The captain was able to walk me through with our friend David here, who's able to, I just heard this, I don't know if everyone else knew, but, but I was just made aware that we've upgraded the, the internet here in the log cabin to fiber. We have a commercial-grade router now. We've updated the, the microphone systems, and David was helping us out with the Zoom. So some of those technology upgrades that we've been looking for, and our, our microphone up here is no longer the battery-operated one that we will constantly having be issues with.
Aye, thank you.
So I'm very happy to see that we've made some progress on that point. So thanks to everyone that was involved with that in getting us to this point. So hopefully no interruptions or problems technologically this evening. So back to public comment. If there's, I don't think we have anyone here in the log cabin, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Zoom. If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to, to provide comment at this time, I'd ask that you raise your hand. And, and Madam Clerk, I know we have a couple of emails that were submitted that wanted to be read under the record as well.
Mr. Holland?
Can you unmute, John? Yeah, one minute.
Yeah, I think I'm going back and forth with panel. We were, we were both, both at it. Hi, good evening, John Holland, 844 Northeast, 119th Street. I don't want to steal any of Anna DeLeon's thunder. She's the Chair of our Parks and Parkways Board. She's going to speak here in a little bit. But I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Officer Solano, who responded very quickly on Thursday, I believe it was, to a number of contractors who came onto 119th and exemplified some of the things that we've been talking about in our meetings in terms of enforcement, of existing codes and existing laws. Basically, had a contractor show up with a bunch of heavy machinery, and just literally them, the workers, everybody, the heavy machines themselves parked right on the median. Yes, the same median where our water pipes run through, where we've had a couple of bursts over the last couple of years. I thought it was handled very quickly, professionally. The, I don't think the crew that was there to do the work was too happy, but just as a reminder to everyone, and, and this was something I think I needed to be reminded of, if they ask, they can park on all the swales that they have. We don't own that property. None of us own our swales. We, we get a tax break to maintain that, right? That's where they can park. We, if you see something, guys, and I guess I'm speaking to everyone here who might be listening, all, whoever many. But if you see contractors parking on medians, just kindly remind them that that's not allowed, that we need you guys to be parking on the swales, our water pipes run through these medians. And if they don't want to move, or if you don't want to confront them for whatever reason, just call the non-emergency number. And if Thursday's example was any indication, they'll get on it quickly, and they'll do what they have to do to get off our medians and then stop threatening the supply of lovely water that we've all come to know and love. So just again, a quick shout out and thank you to Officer Solano for that. Very much appreciated and appreciate the quick response. And Anna's going to speak more to some of the recent goings on with Parks and Parkways later, so, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Case Scan unmute?
Madam Clerk, who did you ask to unmute? We have a Zoom user whose name is labeled Case, S-K-I-N. Put their hand up. Maybe, Madam Clerk, let's move on to Anna and give them opportunity to try and unmute.
Anna DeLeon, unmute?
Hi, folks. This is Anna DeLeon, 655 Northeast, 115th Street. I feel all this pressure now from John talking me up, so if I forget something, please let John raise his hand and tell me what I forgot to tell you all. But we had our Parks and Parkways Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the minutes will eventually get to you. We did discuss the proposed ordinance by Ryan Huntington that had been put up in the spring and then Tree City USA. And we do all agree it's important to maintain the Tree City USA requirements. At this time, our board does not feel that an additional ordinance, ordinance is needed. We feel that it's, you know, up to our board and our village to maintain, you know, the Tree City USA guidelines. And we feel that what we have is sufficient to do it. It's just a, a matter of us having a well-functioning board, which we feel like we're making good strides. We still have a vacancy, and we need help filling it. We've tried to recruit people, and we don't know, the people we've spoken to have not submitted applications as of yet. So if you have any ideas on how to fill that open spot, we would like that. And then we also talked about planning an Arbor Day. We're going to piggyback off of the holiday market that's in December that the Arts and Culture Board is putting together and host an Arbor Day celebration immediately before the market. And we're working out the details of what will happen at that time, but that's when we're planning to celebrate it so that we can maintain compliance with Tree City USA. And then we'll have more time to plan something for 2026, now that we know that that's something that needs to happen. So thank you, guys, for working with us. If you have any other questions, feel free to reach out. And I'm sure the minutes from our meeting will eventually make their way once they pass the processes.
Thanks, Anna.
If I, if I may, I'll take advantage of Anna's opportunity to fill in anything. The one thing that I think I would add to that, and it's probably my fault that I haven't sent the minutes out yet, is that we have an understanding... is that we have an understanding now of the grants that are in play that are potentially going to be coming our way and understand that those grants have to be earmarked for something specific, which means that we basically have to have a number of different scenarios that taking into consideration, you know, uh, you know, scenario one, we get this grant and not these two. Scenario two, we get the middle one, not, you know what I mean? So there's, there's a bunch of different scenarios that would be in play in juxtaposition with the budget that currently exists for this fiscal year. Uh, but I think that those are coming into focus now. Um, had some meetings with John Allred and, and the village manager and the grant writer. So I think we've got our finger on that pulse and I think that we're gonna have a better idea of what those scenarios look like, uh, before our next meeting. So I'll, I'll in there. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Anna. I think that that means that our, our joint workshop was successful.
Yes, it was not a waste of your time.
All right, thanks. Um, we have, uh, one other Zoom user on here that was waiting. Looks like they were able to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I was having technical issues. Um, and I can't change my name. Um, I think that this is Kate Davis, 12,000 Northeast 11th Place. Um, sorry, I wanted to be present, uh, there tonight, but my car battery died. I just wanted to touch on, um, item 9A on the agenda regarding Australian pines, um, as well as item 10I regarding the award to Big Dogs, um, for stump grinding and tree removal. Just had a, you know, the tree removal in the park is obviously emotional topic for everybody. And I just think it's good to have transparency throughout. Um, so I read through some of the memos and it said that, um, this country Joe was our city arborist, so, um, I was also present at the workshop and I just was kind of confused. I didn't realize that we had assigned city arborist, um, and I didn't know if there was a selection process for calling him. Sorry, not city, for the village arborist. So I was not aware that we had a village arborist and just wondering if there was a selection process and if he's getting paid for these services. Um, you know, we do have many problem trees in the village, but I just wasn't sure on how these trees that are proposed to be removed. Um, specifically, there's six trees that Big Dog is gonna be removing that were recently tagged, probably as early as this week. Um, and how those ones were chosen for removal versus other hazard trees within the park. Um, and if those trees were run by any of the boards for discussion or they are commenting before they are being removed. And, um, I guess the last assessment, um, well, my last comment would be, um, you know, it seems like the village arborist who's doing these assessments, seems like he has, you know, a lot of years in doing this. Um, I'm not disagreeing with anything that he said on those arborist reports. That just that since we're a municipality, we should probably make sure that we're covered all of our bases and that this arborist should be qualified to do tree risk assessments, have that qualification. Um, and the assessment tree, the assessment sheets for those trees that they're, that the village is proposing to remove, those sheets should be included in that arborist report so that we're covered. And if he doesn't have those qualifications, we should be, uh, we should have somebody that does have those qualifications. Um, those are all my comments. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Kate. Um, all right, so I don't see any other, uh, further comment on Zoom. So before we move on, Madam Clerk, uh, we have at least, uh, two emails of which I'm aware that wanted to be read in for public comment if you wouldn't mind.
Um, one from Janie Anderson. I think it is a safe, it is. I think it is safe to say we can all agree there should be no construction on Thanksgiving, Christmas, or New Year's. My concern is with the many other federal holidays, including several such as President's Day, Martin Luther King Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day that are not usually observed by private industry, hence not top of mind for most people. Not something most would think about when scheduling work on their home. If a contractor has to be idle on those days, they may turn down the job. Or if they take the job rather than have their crew idle on that day, they may send them off to somewhere where they can work and the Biscayne Park Home Onus Project gets delayed. If construction is not allowed on any federal holiday, do-it-yourself would be severely penalized. They would be left with only Saturday to complete significant projects. By the time most people get home during the week, it's too late. I can tell you from personal experience, when Bob and I were working, we desperately needed Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, et cetera, to get done the many projects we did on our home. Not everyone can afford to hire for everything they do. On the Fourth of July, we hear bottle rockets, firecrackers, et cetera, going off all day and well into the night. But yet, this ordinance proposes forbidding running a table saw or a drill or pressure washing during daylight hours. When someone is trying to improve their property, I think we need to be a little flexible. Speaking of pressure washing, a few months back, we had a code board case that involved construction work outside of approved hours. The work in question was pressure washing. I made the argument, even read the definition from the ordinance, that pressure washing is not construction. Nothing is being constructed or even destructed. The board voted for the one that a violation had occurred. One of the reasons given was that the pressure washing was being done at a property that was undergoing construction. I don't see the distinction. Pressure washing is the same activity whether a property is undergoing construction or not. I would expect pressure washing to be covered under the noise ordinance, not the construction ordinance. I would encourage this commission to clarify this issue in the ordinance. Do you or do you not consider pressure washing to be construction? If you do, please be very clear about it and make sure it is well communicated to residents, most of whom likely would not think of pressure washing as construction. Thank you, Janie Anderson, 11905 Northeast 11th Place. Melanie Oliva. Dear Mr. Childress and the commission, I am unable to attend tonight but have a response to the arborist's report for the remaining Australian pines on my street and Mr. Childress's plan to cut them down soon. This is, this is a sincere question because after so many of your constituents have voiced our concerns since February, when multiple healthy trees containing heron nests were cut down, I'm still struggling to understand. Why did you choose to live in Biscayne Park if you do not care about our birds or wildlife? If you care, you would know that our yellow-crowned night herons return every February, not every March, as the report states. If you care, you would know that a traditional structure nest is, if you if you care, you would find a way to make sure the nests in multiple Australian pines are still there on 121st Street when our herons return in February, so they do not have to expend extra time and energy rebuilding them. Should they choose to return to Biscayne Park after this, the choice to destroy or preserve them is yours. If you care, you would have warned residents about the dangers of rat poison after a resident was arrested for poisoning and killing at least two cats, followed by multiple pet and wildlife deaths from suspected poisoning. Apathy from our village manager and the majority of our commission is not something I expected to encounter so overwhelmingly this year in our bird sanctuary neighborhood. Actions speak louder than words, and when you truly care, you find a way. Thank you, Melanie Oliva 77. I'm sorry, that's not her address.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Right, so we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time. We'll move on to, um, commission reply. Is there any specific reply to comment, uh, before we move on to reports?
I have a question for Kate, if she's still on. She might be able to answer it. Kate, if you hear me, um, and you're there. Uh, I was intrigued about the risk assessment qualifications and if, uh, is this something that normally an arborist will possess working in government?
Oh, and can, can you hear me? I'm, I'm still on.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you.
So any arborist that is going to, again, I, I'm, this may not be a hundred percent accurate, but any arborist that is going to, um, define a tree in their arborist report as being a risk to public health, safety, whatnot, and is a risk and needs to be removed, they have to have this qualification as part of their arborist. So it's a separate certification and, um, they get that qualification to be able to do these types of risk assessments.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Al, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Al, so there's a question being posed about, um, about a certain certification, a risk assessment certification that arborists hold. Um, I, I guess, one, are you familiar with it? And two, do you, uh, have any idea or understanding whether Mr. Allred, um, carries that qualification, qualification?
Um, I'll look into that, Mr. Mayor. I'm not, I don't have that information right now.
I'm aware that he's an ISA certified arborist, but I don't know if that's a separate qualification or if that's part of that certification.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard about it. I'll check into it.
Okay. All right, thanks, Al. Uh, is there any other, um, response to, uh, public comment at this time? Actually, you know what? Sorry, uh, I'm, one of the, my apologies. Al, while we have you for a second, um, I know someone had mentioned, it might have been Kate, uh, something about, um, John being designated as, as the, the village arborist. I do remember that came up during our workshop, but I thought that that was, I, I get like a, like a misstatement that he's not, doesn't carry that official title. Was, is that, was that right?
Well, Mr. Mayor, he's not, he's not an employee of the village, but he is a, a contractor vendor. We're gonna be using him exclusively for any arborist, uh, um, uh, work that needs to be done in the city because he's familiar with the city. He's familiar with the village. He's worked here, uh, previously. He's local. He's done work for North Miami. Uh, he's been around for thirty years. I don't want to, you know, um, um, jump from one arborist to another, so I want to make sure that he's one, one person that we are utilizing exclusively for the village. So yes, he'll be our, our, as, as you would have a village engineer or, um, a, um, uh, a, a building official for the, uh, village, you would be our village arborists.
I have questions about that. Are we discussing this during, um, response to comment? Oh, I pulled the item for discussion.
We ca, which one? Which one was it again? Which?
Maybe it was 10I?
10I. That was, that's not John. That's a different one.
Yeah, that's the one I.
Okay. We can, then we can, uh, I, uh, move any discussion with respect to John in, in his position, his, his, uh, his evaluation of the trees to those items because there are, I know there are a couple. Um, okay, so any other, uh, reply to public comment before we move on?
Uh, just to say thank you, Anna and John, for your feedback and doing, um, you know, checking in back with us after the workshop we had. Um, and I didn't, I don't know that I took note of it or if you have a schedule that Arbor, uh, Day that we have to have, the, the the landing, I don't remember what the name is, uh, the designation. I don't know, it's something that was supposed to come up. Um, I don't know if any of you two can hear me and answer.
I'm here, actually. Just raised my hand.
Thank you.
It'll be, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not able to be there. My kids at swim practice, but, um, the Arbor Day celebration will be December, I believe it's September, December 4th. It's the day of the holiday market.
Okay.
That will be over at the log cabin, yeah, on Sunday. I know on Saturday is like the winter fest at the park. We're talking about piggybacking off of the holiday market on a Sunday and we would do it right before the market starts. I also, as I'm listening to this discussion, this, I am, slipped my mind and I should have said this earlier. We also felt it was important that the village looks at the standard operating procedures that are, that if they exist, what they already are. Um, Al said that he would look into, um, if there were any that had been written before he came in. Um, and if they're, if they do exist, we think that's important the village looks at them again and makes sure that that's how we want to operate and then it's a matter of enforcement. Um, and if they don't exist, then we feel it's important that there are some standard operating procedures as with respect to trees, um, as a village, um, public property that should be looked at.
Got it. Well, thank you. Thank you very much for that feedback and, um, yeah, just ESA confirmed December 14th, um, as the aiming date for that. Thank you both.
Yes.
All right, um, so let's move on to commission reports. Uh, just open the floor. Commission, you wanna get started?
I, I would just like to say thank you to the staff for a wonderful job for Halloween, to the chief, police chief, to the police officers out there. Really, every department was, uh, well represented and I, I could see you all working hard and, and it was good to see the residents, uh, the residents and the employees out enjoying Halloween. It seemed like we were out there together enjoying it. Great turnout. ESA, great job again. Uh, so I just want to say thank you to the staff for a great Halloween.
Well, I echo the sentiment. It was another great event. ESA, thanks very much for all the hard work and the planning. Um, and I missed the end of the costume contest, unfortunately. Um, and chief and to all the, the officers and to all the staff and everyone. Um, chief, you guys did a great job with ensuring the safety of the community. Uh, it was nice to get that command center, uh, lent over from the city of Miami, which, um, I forget who it was, but someone granted me a tour of the inside, which was very nice. So very much appreciated. Um, Halloween is always a lot of fun here in Biscayne Park. Couple of quick things. I did have a legislative update session with Senator Jones. Um, not a whole lot from our end. We did discuss South Florida Water Management District, uh, a little bit. Um, and he had a couple of ideas on how we might partner with neighboring municipalities to approach them and, and what they're doing in the, uh, in the canal. Um, he also recommended, well, he, he talked a little bit about appropriations this year. So I took the opportunity to get in touch with David Caserta to talk about when we would plan on going up again this year. And right now, tentatively, we are looking at January 11th through January 14th to be in Tallahassee for legislative session for appropriations this year. And, um, just a very preliminary idea of what are the priorities this year. We already did the water project last year, so he said, it's always a priority, but let's not do that again because we're still in the middle of this phase of it. But he emphasized the, um, uh, the, the money for the study for septic to sewer, which has gained a lot of steam. Septic to sewers gained a lot of steam in the legislature, especially down here in South Florida. Um, and then also, uh, rec center upgrades. So he had made a recommendation that we look at those two areas for appropriations this year. Um, it doesn't have to be a hard and fast decision now, but that's his recommendation. See, I know the, uh, our application went out to, um, Commissioner Steinberg's office for the $25,000 for the tree, uh, for the grant for the tree replacement. That was done just about a week and a half ago, so it's pretty recent, but that's out with them now and I'm on the, under the understanding that they said our project was acceptable. So the application is on them. We're waiting for approval. Uh, and then we also, we had a quick update with, uh, with Pedro, with CAP, um, on the landscape issue that we had discussed here at the workshop about landscape enforcement. And I know Pedro's not with us, but, um, he was going to start reaching out to other surrounding municipalities to talk about how they enforce landscaping and compliance with county codes. Um, and he said that there was someone, would be someone, there, there would be someone available within our framework already that we could add landscape review to their process. So that was the recommendation was, and Al, I know you're with us and you were on the call, so certainly correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, and Doreen, I know you were with us, too. I think that that, if I'm remembering correctly, that was the recommendation, that there's someone within the review process right now that can add landscape review to their kind of checklist of reviewing plans. Um, and I don't believe it would come at an added cost to the village. Um, and then he was going to, Pedro was gonna reach out to surrounding municipalities to talk about, are there other ways? Um, and, um, arborist, I think that was the other thing. There were arborist services that could come in and actually go on site and review these, uh, review what's been planted. So jury's still out on that one, but they're looking into it. So that's all I got.
Can I suggest maybe as a December agenda item that we include appropriations as a discussion item?
Sure.
Since your deadlines start for January.
It's coming up quick. Mr. Manager, could you? Mr. Manager, could you take a mental note for us? That we want to, we'd like to have a discussion item on our December agenda for appropriations?
Yes, yes. I wasn't able to hear exactly what Commissioner Amsoor was saying.
Just a, just a discussion item for December on appropriations based on what Mr. Caserta and I had discussed about target areas for appropriations for legislative session this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I wanted to say, you're about to fall, yes. So yeah, so we got the presentation finally from South Florida Water Management District, and I think that was very insightful. I think it was a missed opportunity to not have residents be aware of the deadline that was part of this project to give some feedback. I think it was posted after the deadline has passed, but I don't know if any of you were able to submit comments in any part of the project.
Is that South Florida Water Management or is that Army, US Army Corps of Engineers?
US Army, it's part of the same project.
I thought they extended that. Did they not extend the deadline?
I reviewed, it was like August, I'm sorry. I can't remember the deadline now.
October 15th.
What's that?
October 15th, but I think.
It was the original deadline.
The original, but I think they did extend it. I don't know what they extended.
Okay, so I wasn't aware. The post we did online was after the deadline had passed. I put some comments based on what I got as comments from residents and, you know, feedback from neighbors. And so I was able to play some comments. I didn't hear back. I don't know what the next step is. I just found out that there might be an extension. If there is, I think we shouldn't announce it and publicly post it on the website, so people are aware and have the chance to do that. The full presentation, it's very detailed, and I do still have some questions I have to reach out to ask. It's very technical. I also wanted to ask about FDOT. I did request about a month ago. John is not here, so ISA or the manager might answer. There was a residency in potholes everywhere, sort of a testing seemed to be. I don't know if you guys saw it. There was like markings on the grounds with spray, especially on the east side of the village. And I had a resident call me to come and check them out because she had had issues of someone's tripping in one of what looked like very similar to this. But definitely there was work being done. So John came over. I asked about what was going on. I sent pictures and I never heard back. That was about a month ago. So, Mr. Manager, do you have feedback as to what's going on with those holes? What project of FDOT is in the village that's happening that it's sort of creating all this markings?
Commissioner, were they poles or are they just markings on the road?
I'm sorry?
Were they poles or just markings on the street? Alls I knew was there's markings on the street. I didn't know there was any poles installed or anything like that.
Well, I did send pictures to John and actually that were taken the day that I was with the resident. John came at your request to come and check them out. So I'm asking you what.
Yeah, so there was only, there was only markings on the street. We sent out to FPNL, we sent out to Miami-Dade County, we sent it out to FDOT, and we also sent it out to South Florida Water Management if they knew anything about it. We did not get anything back from any of those agencies. They thought maybe it was something, something else, a private, somebody private was doing it, but we did not get any feedback. So we, we were asking staff to, you know, to just keep an eye on if they come back so we could approach the workers.
So these are about two feet deep, some of them. They're everywhere on the east side. Some specific locations are painted in yellow, painted in pink. So, you know, again, I think the idea here is they're not marked in any other way where people would see it. And because we have no sidewalks, people walk on the swales, which can represent an issue. Go ahead. Could be. Again, that was the point of trying to figure out, that has markings. I couldn't tell you what they mean, you know, like. And I'm sure the colors mean something too. I don't know. So if you can just verify that, Mr. Manager, that's what I'm still pending to provide feedback to a couple of residents on this concern. And then the other thing on my report, I just wanted to highlight. I thought it was a missed opportunity communication that we didn't talk about the issue with the cats that was going on. I know residents kind of came back saying, can we push this out? You know, for the community to be aware. Some of them are taking them on themselves and made a video about, you know, the safety and what we need to learn about that. And I just, I think in the future, these are opportunities to take. We have, you know, the app, we highlight the events, we highlight, you know, a presentation coming up, whatever it might be. This is a good thing just to put out there. And I know residents were very much like, help us to spread the world. You know, if you need like the content, even the video could be posted because it was an issue, right? Someone was apprehended for this. It was a crime at that moment and they were taken. And, you know, even if it didn't escalate to more than that, it was enough on a safety matter. And I wanted just to highlight that that was important. And again, to use what we have, we have a lot of mediums for communication that I think we can rely on. And finally, I've been having a lot of issues about public record requests. So I have been trying to address residents as commissioner to highlight what happens in the agenda, gather the feedback. I haven't been answered to one public request regarding the email list for months now. I'm talking months. I have asked, I've copied the manager, of course, the clerk, I've asked the attorney. So I'm sharing here as what is the next step, and I think, I don't know if Brad can jump in. But what is considered, I mean, I understand this is by state law required. We need to provide public records. Is that right? And then my second question, which is, how do I escalate this besides bringing it to the, you know, the rest of the commission to be aware? Because that's my understanding, that's public record as it stands. And it has been my opportunity to address issues and highlight agenda and provide feedback and, you know, engage with residents. And I'm not being provided this list. So where do I stand with this? This is a question for Brad.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
So I guess, I guess I would break it down into two different answers because I'm not sure I can answer the second question because I think it might be a conflict, but.
I can't hear you, Brad, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to break down the question into two answers because the second part, I'm not sure I can answer because it might be a conflict of interest for me to answer and I'll explain why. So, and Commissioner, I know you and I have had some conversations about this privately. So to the extent that your requests, because I mean, a commissioner making a request of the village for records in the course that they're requesting in the course and scope of their responsibilities as a commissioner is not necessarily, not necessarily needs to be a public record request, but to the extent that you're making a public records request, yes, the village should be acknowledging that request and should be processing that request within a reasonable time and either providing responsive records or providing some type of response. The response could be there are no records, or there's a cost for the records, or or, but some type of response, acknowledgement response to the record request, or the production of the record should be done. So to the extent that you're making a public records request, that's gone unanswered, I, I don't necessarily feel comfortable giving you legal advice as to how to proceed because essentially what you're asking me to do is how to proceed against my client, which is the village.
Yeah, no, I just want to know what the next step to elevate. So here, so that's why I wanted to bring it publicly because I've done this several times. So for all you to know, this has been going on for a few months now. I have asked for this list for a few months. And so it's not being provided, and that is one of my rights, as I understand, for anybody, right? Not just because I'm a commissioner, but because it's public information. But on top of that, I think the issue at hand is that it is my job to represent, and I want to use the database to engage with people. And so that is not allowing me to do that. So I would ask of you to reinforce with management as a commission and we stand to make sure to deliver public records, not just to me. I mean, if this is happening to me, as I asked the manager, do we have a log of public records requests? The answer was no. It is very concerning that we don't. It is more concerning that as a commissioner, I'm not getting answers. I don't know who else is not getting answers. So, and specifically for the, you know, just be able to fulfill my duty. So I'm requesting for this to be fixed. And I guess my next question is if you cannot advise me, Bradley, because I understand what that would mean, what, who can I ask? I mean, that's, you know, and I know at some point we'll get into legal fees, which is a question I have. But I need to ask someone, right? So how do I address this issue if it's not going to be through you legally?
I guess my, my I'm putting it in a difficult, difficult position by you asking that question.
I understand. I've asked this offline, but I have to bring it, you know.
I, I get it. I mean, I could refer you to Chapter 119, which lays out the process for public record requests that aren't responded to. And it does lay out the processes to what next steps are. But I can't really give you advice as to what the next step is other than, which is not legal advice, having a conversation with the manager to get the records and the clerk to get the records that you request. So.
But, but so is, I just want to understand, so there would not be anybody like our insurance carrier? I don't know if that's something that I should ask them? Is that a claim to, I'm trying to see if it's not you because it's a conflict of interest if I need to go to an attorney. What's the next step?
Mr. Mayor? Can I jump in here, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
So yeah, the private conversations that Commissioner Amsoor has been having with the attorney wasn't shared with me. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure of the records that she is asking for. I know she has, in the past, have asked for a list from GoGov of who's have signed up to GoGov. And I know that those have been provided in the past to her. But is, if you're asking for anything else, Commissioner, I'm not aware of those.
Okay, so I'll do this. I'll just put them in an email to you so you can address your copy on this email. And no, I haven't received the GoGov list. So just to conclude this, and I know we got to keep going, I just wanted to ask, so again, I didn't know what, you know, what's feasible for me as a next step. So is there anybody else I can ask? Is this like an attorney on, like, how do you call it, private attorney that I would have to contact? So that's what I was wondering, Brad. I'll check the section, chapter 119 you said.
So Commissioner Amsoor, let me, let me say this. I'm available just like the village attorney is available. You can reach out to me at any time and call me at any time if you're having a problem with any of the staff members. I think you should be contacting me instead of the village attorney and then let me know that you are having this difficulty. So I wasn't aware of this. I'll certainly look into it. Is it, is it that what you're asking for? Is that what you're looking for, the email list?
Yes, and there are other things, and you know, again, you're copied on it. But, and thank you for saying that, and I appreciate, I understand what the, what the role is. I'm just wondering now, a question for the attorney as to, you know, what would happen? You know, if this situation's come at hand, what's the next step? I just wanted to understand. Again, Brad, you know, I don't know.
So what I could, what I could say to you is no, it's not a, it's not a claim at this point or a conversation with the insurance counsel. And if you, if without, you could either refer to Chapter 119 or you could consult with your own personal attorney to ask them to advise you what next steps would be if that's the path you decided to take. But again, I, I mean, to the manager's point,
Yeah.
I would suggest, before even taking that route, that you have a conversation or share an email with the manager, directly to the manager, asking him or advising him specifically what you're looking for. And I would hope that would resolve the issue.
Thank you. Yeah, well, again, you know, the manager's copy, staff is copied, and the major concern beyond that is what happens with the rest of a request that it's not me. All right. So thank you for that. I think that was the end of my, let me just double check. Yeah.
Okay. Well, please keep the commission updated in December, okay? All right, so that concludes our commission reports. Let's move on to our, our department reports. Our first department report is 9A, which is village manager. Al's with us. I know you have a couple of LTCs on here, Al, and you have a general update. So do you want to cover any of these? Do you want to introduce any of these? Anything else you want to provide us now is the time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could turn it over to, briefly to ISA. He's got, he's got a report about Halloween, some other issues, and then he'll turn it back over to me.
Great. You're up, Isa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commission, staff, and residents. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the Halloween event. I first want to say that it was definitely an all hands on deck event. It was every department pitching in, from the police department to public works, code enforcement. Our own village clerk was there playing security for my rides in the lines. So everyone pitched in. It was an absolute team effort. And I will give that credit to, to planning and preparation of the team, sitting with the manager, sitting with all the departments. It cannot have happened that smoothly without everybody's help. So according to captain, we were talking about maybe 5,000 or 6,000 people in the streets of the village that evening. I could not tell you how many people came through the park, but tons and tons, the lines were packed from beginning to end. We made some adjustments this year during our planning where we brought in porta potties to alleviate the traffic for the bathrooms inside. And we brought in cleaning service to be active during the event, keeping the bathrooms clean inside. And the porta potties made a huge difference with alleviating those lines for bathrooms and just getting water and those things. Again, all staff, hands on deck. We announced through every avenue, we even gave a little perk to our Biscayne Park app and email participants where they were let known that our rides would be open at 5:00, even though the start time for the event was 5:30. So just a little kind of twist we did to try to incentivize people to use the app and use the emails. We had to pay for that time anyway, so it was a nice little way to just kind of incentivize them to use that email. But other than that, the event was super smooth. From my end, I had no incidents besides we closed too early. And I think having the police presence there, the command center, everything there just made a beautiful and smooth event for all our residents and guests. So just want to thank the staff and the team for all their help. And again, you all support. The next event we have coming up is Food and Tunes with the Biscayne Park Foundation. That is November 15th on Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. So we're keeping it rolling with our events. December, of course, we'll have Winter Fest and then the Holiday Market the following day. So a busy, a busy time of season for us.
Excellent, Isa. Thanks very much.
Isa, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
For the Halloween event, as usual, was it as concurred as it usually is? Was there a lot of people or?
I think, I mean, obviously, it was on a Friday, so Halloween on a Friday with no school. I think the numbers were, I believe they were a little higher than, than last year.
They have been?
But last year, there was no school the following day, so it's kind of hard to gauge. But there also was a ton of events happening in the county and throughout neighboring communities, which I think did maybe help alleviate some of the traffic. But we definitely had, if not our normal numbers, which I think we had higher numbers, actually.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Isa.
Sorry, the only question I have about the Halloween, I'll ask the chief when he gives his report. I can, I can ask the question now. I don't, actually, I asked it now, has to do with the Halloween. Was there any incidents that we had? Usually, we, you know, we don't, too many incidents. Years ago, we used to have, you know, car break-ins. We had no incidents this year, chief? Fantastic. That's, that's what I want to hear. I want to thank Isa for a great job. I wasn't had the opportunity to be. I wasn't had the opportunity to be there, which I'm usually there every year. This is the first year I wasn't there. And so I just wanted, from what residents that I've spoken to said, it was fantastic, so. Thank you for doing that.
All right, Al, we're back to you.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, um, Village Commissioners. As you know, I I wasn't scheduled to be here tonight. I was supposed to be in India. But last week, when I was attending the conference in Ta- Tampa, the ICMA Conference, I think I sat sat next to one of the, one or a couple of individuals of the five thousand people that were there. Uh, well, somebody had COVID in the room and I caught COVID when I got back on Thursday and tested positive for COVID. So my trip to India was can't, India was canceled. I hope to be back in the office by by Thursday morning. Um, I'd like to thank Isa and his staff and everybody, uh, and uh, who did a great job in uh, in in preparing for Halloween this, 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 this year. As you heard, it was a very successful event. Uh, Public Works, the uh, Department of Code Compliance and our Chief, Chief Avila and our Police Department for making this a really uh, successful event. Uh, we are, we're going to continue to work on uh, each year on building the event and we uh, uh, thank the Commissioners that were there. Uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Honey, thank you all for being there and supporting the event. Uh, I'll be brief because I know we have a uh, a packed agenda, but I just want to take a few minutes, a few things to go over. Uh, Mayor, as you said, there's a couple of uh, LTCs on the, on the agenda. One of the agendas, one of the LTCs regarding to the nine Australian pines on one hundred twenty first Street. Uh, attached to LTC is the Arbor's Report in which the inspection of the trees exhibited advanced decay, insect and termite activity and had exterior structural compromise. Uh, the report noted that the Australian pines are invasive species per the Florida Exotic Plan Council. Uh, during the inspection, the Arbor's reported that no active bird nests or bird activity were observed in any of the nine trees. Uh, uh, a uh, uh, second inspection of the trees were observed in any of the nine trees. Uh, significant structural damage was uh, uh, observed in the, on the, all nine of the trees. A inactive nests were observed in a nearby black olive tree. Uh, based on the existing existence of decay, active insects, uh, damage and the loss of structural integrity, uh, it was, uh, it was recommended that all nine Australian pines would be removed as soon as possible. Uh, and and not, the, the, this is in line with the the village's ongoing environmental and public health uh, instructions for eliminating both the structural hazard and known invasive allergic sources. I had reached out to the city of North Miami and providing them with a copy of the report and our co- and a copy of our agreement that we share on one hundred twenty first Street. I had a phone call with the city of North Miami City Manager this morning. I'm following up with her on Thursday to schedule removal of these trees. Uh, and uh, um, I will give you more information what, once we know how how we're going to proceed and how the cost is going to be shared. Uh, with respect to our state lobbyist, he's up in Tallahassee now. I spoke with him today and I think, Mayor, you also spoke with him in that he's already been, you know, again lobbying our request for appropriations. We're uh, requesting two uh, two appropriations this year. One is for our uh, to convert our septic to sewer and to do a study. First, you need a study to proceed. And uh, much like what Miami Shores has done in the past. And the second is updating our playground equipment for the Todd lot. Uh, finally, I want to wish uh, Commissioner Smearia, Chief Avila, a happy Veterans Day uh, that we'll be celebrating next week and all the employees, all our residents who are, have served uh, in this great nation. Uh, thank you for your service and we wish you a happy Veterans Day. Also, um, we'll not, we will not be meeting before Thanksgiving. Uh, so I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And we're all organizing a holiday luncheon for the employees and a turkey giveaway. Then I sent an email out to all of you. Uh, the commission is invited to participate and uh, uh, in this event. And if you wish to make a small um, donation so that these both events are successful. Uh, thank you again, and that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So I'll ask the Commissioner if there are any questions for the manager on the report this time.
One quick question, Al. Um, when would the, the, the amount of money that you requested for the uh, for the Thanksgiving uh, is two fifty, right? Two fifty per Commissioner. Uh, when would you need that? By when would you need that?
Commissioner, in the next two weeks would be appropriate.
Perfect. Is everybody cool up here with uh, with doing that? Is that something that everybody's good with?
I'm fine with that.
He was, it was in, he sent an email out. Oh, okay, okay, cool. So, but you're good with it? John, Jonathan, you're good? Commissioner Amesler? I'm sorry?
What, no, what were you asking if we?
About the uh, the donation for the Thanksgiving that?
No, but like, you mean, everybody needs to be on board?
I'm just asking if you're okay with?
I don't know. To be honest with you, I even, I haven't even gotten there.
Okay. All right, Al, uh, so in the next two weeks. Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Here, your mic, your mic.
Again, I hope you feel better. Sorry to hear that. Um, also, we're gonna, for Veterans Day, are we gonna have an official ceremony on Veterans Day?
What, I'm sorry?
Official Veterans Day, like all the other cities, on Veterans Day? Ceremony?
So Commissioner, as you know, that's, that's a holiday and most staff will have a minimum staffing at that level. Uh, I'll, I'll, I was going to order a wreath and we could put it either at, at, at the Village Hall, outside the Village Hall, at the flag or over at the park, whatever you think is more appropriate.
Any other questions for the manager? Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, thanks for the report. I hope you uh, feel better soon and wish you speedy recovery. And Chief, when we did the presentation or the proclamation for Veterans Day, I neglected to recognize you. My apologies, thank you for your service. Um, all right, so let's go on to nine B, which is our code compliance report. We have Doreen here with us. Are there any questions from the commission on the code compliance report? Hearing none? Thanks, Doreen. All right, next is our Parks and Rec Report. Uh, Isa's here with us. Um, Isa, is there anything that you want to introduce or any questions for the report? Other than what we, what we've already heard? Hearing none? Okay. Um, our Police Department report is next. Uh, Chief, is there anything specific other than what we have in front of us that you want to share with us? Nothing specific, okay. Any questions for the chief or um, uh, on the uh, on the department report?
Just for comprehension purposes, Chief. Um, are most arrests that are done in the village uh, due to vehicle stops?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioners.
Is that, give it a tap. Here we go.
For the most part, yes.
Okay, so, so that, that's just for me to understand, because I, as I was just looking at your report and you had zero arrests in October compared to forty-six the year before, right?
That is correct.
And so is that a correlation uh, of the fact that we've given less tickets out uh, this year than last year?
For that month, yes. Uh, violations are are down.
Is that because people are obeying or or?
It appears that way. It's a, it's a funny situation. We had uh, one of the red light camera companies come out uh, just recently, within the last month. And they gave me a, they, they put out at the traffic light, they put out where where I thought we were gonna have a lot of violations. And they did it for about a week. And the violations were nothing. I mean, three red lights, you know, things of that nature. So, or whatever the reason is, uh, at least in Biscayne Park, the, the drivers uh, are, are hitting the uh, the law here.
Good thing, all right.
Which corner was that?
Sorry?
And which, which camera did you say?
The red, the
The only red light we have
Only red light that we have here, which is basically five ways.
Yeah.
And they came out and did a test. And I was gonna, you know, eventually try to bring it up to you guys and uh, you know, it's a, it's, it's, it's a good way to control traffic. Problem is, is there's not enough violations. Uh, I mean, it was very, very minimal and and it's, it's just not worth it.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions from the commission? Chief, Captain, thank you very much. All right, our final report is Public Works. I know John is not here with us. Uh, any questions or concerns or anything that anyone wants to raise with respect to the Public Works report? Other than, I know you already mentioned yours. Okay, all right. So, uh, having concluded our reports, let's go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a first and a second to approve the consent agenda as it's been amended?
Mr. Mayor, before, just for clarity, since there's a lot of changes, can we read off the items that were on, are still on consent agenda?
Ones I still have on consent are ten D, ten F, ten G. Sounds like a yes.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I know, I think Tiffany is here with us and I know Tiffany's item remained on consent. So I know Tiffany's been involved with the foundation for a long time. Um, and she's given a lot of her time and effort to the village and I know she's moving over to the Arts and Culture Board. So Tiffany, if that, if that is you and you can hear us, thanks very much. All right, so let's move on past the consent to our amended. Uh, this keeps pushing me up. Hold on. Most of these are resolutions, so let's start with the ordinances and then we'll get down to the resolutions that have been moved from ten to twelve. So our first ordinance of the evening is under eleven A, which is two thousand twenty-five dash zero three. Uh, Brad, are you still with us?
I am.
Would you mind, please, reading the ordinance on the record for us?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh three, an ordinance of the Village Commission of the Village of Biscayne Park, Florida, amending sect- section eighteen point four, permitted days and hours for construction work of chapter eighteen, construction of the Village of Biscayne Park Land Development Code by prohibiting construction work to be performed on federal holidays, providing for inclusion in the code and scrivener's errors, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing for repealer and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you, Brad. Uh, is there anyone that wishes to provide public comment on the ordinance? Seeing none here in Village Hall and seeing none on Zoom? Okay, uh, do I have a first and a second to move the ordinance into discussion?
Motion to move discussion. Second it.
Okay. Um, all right, so um, I know we received uh, at least one public comment item on this. But before we get to that, um, Mr. Manager, I know you provided a backup memo for this ordinance. Is there anything you'd like to share with us uh, before we discuss?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so this was brought to us by a, by a resident recently, uh, I think it was Labor Day during Labor Day weekend and letting us know that there was construction activity uh, in, in, in her neighborhood. And she was upset that that work was being performed. Uh, we then, uh, staff and I had reviewed the ordinance and became aware of the, the regulations that allowing construction work to go on from eleven, after eleven AM. And I think it's till five PM. So um, we wanted, uh, every city that I've worked at, uh, the three, oh, Miami-Dade County, Miami Beach, City of Doral, within Miami-Dade County. And I looked at, I researched our neighboring uh, uh, cities, also Miami Shores, El Portel. Each, in North Miami, each of them have regulations in their residential zones. Uh, we don't have a commercial zone, but we have residential, only residential. That doesn't allow any construction on Sundays and national holidays. So that's, that's pretty much uh, uh, across the board. And uh, I didn't do a survey of all of thirty-four municipalities, but I could tell you uh, most of those municipalities do not allow construction work activity in residential districts during Sundays and national holidays. So that's why we brought it to you for your consideration.
All right, uh, thanks, Al. Uh, so, so let's move to discussion on the item. Um, there was one item, Brad, this question is for you. Uh, there was one item that was, was raised by a resident uh, with concern with respect to this item in that it could restrict homeowners in the improvements of their home. Is there any distinction or any uh, distinction between construction contractors and construction workers versus homeowners' work in, within the code that would differentiate these two?
There is not, but let, let me, if you give me a moment just to pull up the code and I will give you the definition that applies for this, this or results.
I didn't see one. I didn't see
Well, I thought I had it up. It, it's not, it, it's in the first sentence of the code. Just give me one moment.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, if I could address that. I had an opportunity to respond to that email. I called uh, Janie personally. And I said that what, the, the industry standard is that construction work is, is uh, this, the, defined as work for which a permit is, is required. So if somebody's, if they're at, at the job site and they're painting the inside of their, of the residence or doing uh, minor repairs that don't require a permit, then this ordinance wouldn't uh, apply to them. It's only that work that requires a permit. Uh, electrical, plumbing, mechanical and, and, and building construction, that work that falls under a permit under the, on the Florida Building Code.
All right, okay.
And if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so if you look at eighteen point four, eighteen point four point one specifically says the erection, including excavation, demolition, alteration, alteration or repair of any building or delivery of materials other than at the following times is prohibited. So the erection, which includes excavation, demolition, alteration or repair of any building or delivery of materials would be prohibited during federal holidays, the way, the way this is amended. So I don't know that I necessarily agree with the manager's interpretation as the ordinance is presented today that it would only apply to, into, to, to, to those that requiring permits. I mean, alteration or repair of any building, an interior, interior painting of a building I think would fall into the definition of an alteration or repair. Um, we can certainly amend the ordinance further to include however you want to do it. I mean, if you want to do it external, you know, applying to only external work, only to which a permit is required, um, we, we can do that. But eighteen point four point one is fairly general as it, as it exists.
So let me just ask this question very quickly, because I think this might answer it. Um, Al, I understand what you're saying, that traditionally this is how it would be defined. But looking at the definitions under eighteen point one, it doesn't say specifically, construction means this. Um, would we be able to maybe uh, do as Brad is recommending, uh, change or alter that definition to make sure that we can do as much as we can to exempt homeowners from doing simple repairs um, to address that concern?
Yeah, yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, the, the Building Code further, further defines what alterations are. So that's defined with Building Code. So uh, and, and painting under the Building Code wouldn't be defined as an alteration. So, but um, the, the Village Attorney is right. It, it, I, I, I didn't, I didn't consider the um, the, the uh, supplies being delivered on, on a, on a, on a national holiday that that would be prohibited. So it's up to you whether you want to leave that in there or take that out. But I think uh, I think our staff has an understanding, our building officials have an understanding of just what is allowed and what, what is not allowed.
Yeah, I, I, I can appreciate that and, you know, most of these people have been doing it a very long time, so they deal with this on a day-to-day basis. But uh, it might be helpful to have that a little more clearly delineated in, in the Building Code. So, you know, we can alleviate any concerns that homeowners might be subject to this, uh, to this code violation for performing services. Uh, now, that's just my opinion and the rest of the commission can weigh in on that. And then I know there was one other concern made with respect to, you know, uh, having, not being able to work on certain federal holidays that maybe most people aren't, some people aren't celebrating or traditionally non-work holidays. But, you know, I just, for the benefit of the commission, I look back, there's only eleven federal holidays. We're talking about eleven days out of three hundred sixty-five. So while the concern is, is well taken, um, I don't know that it's, it's going to be a major problem for, for contractors. So those are the only two points that I would make and I'm open to the commission on, on how you'd like to proceed with the rest of the ordinance.
So, yeah, so if I may, um,
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, so, yeah, if the commission would give me, give me direction as to what they're looking at? Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, if the commission would give me, give me direction as to what they're looking at, as far as revising 18.4.1. As, as I said, we can do it where it talks, excludes in, any interior alterations or repairs. If, if that's, if that's what the commission's intent is. As far as the, the holidays, as you identified, there's only 11 holidays. If you want to exclude specific holidays, federal holidays from the prohibition, we can either, either notate that those are excluded or list the prohibited holidays. We can do that several different ways depending on what the commission's desires.
Well, I don't want to, personally, I don't want to start getting into the territory of choosing which holidays are more important than others. So I would just say, leave them all.
Yeah, I, I concur because the manager brings up a very good point. If other municipalities in our area have restricted construction on federal holidays, I would not like to see our municipality become the one that squeeze it in on Thanksgiving, squeeze it in on, on Veterans Day because we allow it and Miami Shores doesn't, North Miami doesn't. If they don't allow it, that we, we become the low hanging fruit that, hey, I can, Miami Shore, or Biscayne Park allows it, let's squeeze it in when we can't. So for me, and, and also it's a very good point that everyone celebrates differently. So you might not celebrate a holiday, but someone else might. So I think that if we include holidays, we should include all federal holidays.
Any other discussion points?
I, I agree. If all the other cities do off, off, off federal holidays, then I think we should do the same thing. I don't think we should be any different than any, anybody else.
Okay.
If all the other cities do it, then yeah, I agree with you 100%. Then we should be standard, should be the same.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner?
I agree with your points. And I, and I think with the neighboring municipalities, you know, restricting it in a way that makes sense, to avoid noise. I mean, we're one street away for some people that it would make sense to be consistent.
Okay.
I'm not clear what the proposal ends up being then related to what construction means from 11 to 5:00 PM. So are we defining this by those that have a permit? Are we defining it for interior only or how are we doing it?
I think that's, so I think that's the last item. And the interior versus exterior to me becomes kind of a bit of a slippery slope.
Yeah.
You've got people constructing a house and they're inside the framework. Well, technically we're.
We're inside.
You're shaking your head.
Yeah, I think you could do quite a bit of construction while still staying inside the four walls of a residence. I'm just back, like spitballing here, maybe things that require a permit are not allowed, things that don't require a permit. Maybe Doreen can talk more about if that opens up any legal loopholes for us that we, we're not thinking about right now. But I think if it doesn't require a permit, maybe, and it just falls under general maintenance of a, of a residence, I think that should be allowed. But as far as pulls a permit, I don't, wouldn't want to get to interior, exterior because you get 30 people inside a house working at one time and they're inside.
Yeah, I, based, okay, so you're thinking unpermitted work is probably the way to go. So I think maybe that's the way to go, Brad and Al, maybe try to clearly define this a little more narrowly to say that un, a permit that doesn't require, or work that doesn't require a permit would be exempt.
Question on that. So for example, painting, does painting require a permit or no?
Yes, it does.
So.
Not, not for interior, not for interior.
Not for the interior?
Yeah, not for interior.
Okay, so permit, I, I'm asking permit, no permit required for painting inside your house.
No permit is, no permit is required for the interior.
Say you needed to pressure wash your roof, right? Would that require permitting or no? No, that's just maintenance of your property. Yeah. You want to say that over there?
So with pressure washing, there's, there's a line that we cannot cross. And it's because of the noise ordinance. If they're doing pressure washing, they're pressure washing their roof after a certain time or too early in the morning, then there's a problem because the neighbors are sleeping. You don't want to be having your pressure washer making noise for them.
We're covered for, for the noise ordinance in that sense.
Of the ordinance.
Yeah.
They have to be careful with that.
So I'm just trying to understand what other interior permitting issues would you require to follow through with this ordinance?
Say if someone is tiling their house, I mean, there's really not much noise involved in that. We can't hear the noise, but if they have their tile cutter outside, they, with the diamond blade, that makes a lot of noise. That's a problem. If they can keep it inside and there's no noise, then I don't think we should worry about that. So what the commission should consider is if you allow certain types of construction and not other types of construction, how can we say enforcement monitor who's cutting tile outside and they're doing interior work? Because they, they'll say that to us. We are working inside, so we're allowed to do it, but you're using a diamond blade cutting machine that's making a lot of noise outside. And noise ordinance. So the best way to do this, and what I've seen in other cities, is not to allow construction on certain days. Just leave the word construction. We know what construction is when we get to the site.
So, so the, I'm trying to understand what the issue might be for residents and the first thing that comes to mind is those that work. And then, yeah, and the, the only opportunity that they have would be to work on their free time when they do them themselves instead of hiring a contractor. Would that be a case? I'm trying to understand why wouldn't we move forward with this?
I believe that distinction should be made between someone doing work at their house and a major construction site. So if someone is building a house from scratch, it's new construction. The type of work and equipment that they're using would be different from the type of equipment someone would be doing, painting their house or doing some, you know, little construction work at their house. So there, there's a distinction there. Construction site permitted work with a construction fence around it. Personally, I don't think they should allow that on any holiday.
What about a distinction between the person performing the work, the homeowner versus a contractor?
The homeowner is performing the work, what should be considered, are they making noise for the neighbors?
So what if we?
Doing regular work, you know, tiling their house, painting their house, and we can see it's a residential house and they're doing the work themselves.
Yes, so, so Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, it would, it would also go, if the work that the homeowner is performing needs a permit, then they would be in violation.
They're replacing their roof, for instance.
Yeah, if they're demo, demolishing the entire bathroom and putting in, you know, new sinks and new toilet and it's on a holiday, that, that work requires a permit. So that, 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 they would be in violation of the ordinance then.
What about, what if we, Brad, what if we just tie this to the noise ordinance?
To the what?
To the noise ordinance.
Well.
I, I mean, it already exists. So, I mean, like, you know, technically we don't need to, but.
So you're talking about instead of changing, instead of changing 18.4, you want to change the noise ordinance to prevent the outside noise?
No, that's, that's not what I meant. I don't, I don't think what I was thinking makes any sense.
That was.
I'm just.
No, I know, I, I, go ahead, Ryan.
That would drastically affect people having a holiday party and the same, during the same times, noise is noise. So if you, if you can't say no construction noise, it would just be, if you meant no noise on federal holidays, then you would, you know, have a Christmas party, that would.
They would have to add time in there.
Yeah, I think the way that I said it was incorrectly. All right, so then, Doreen, what would be your recommendation then?
My recommendation would be no construction on holidays.
And we don't have, we don't have a specific definition for construction.
Right, you have, you can't, it would be too vague. You'd have to refer to something to define what construction is if we're going to change 18.4.1 to include just construction.
So, Mr. Mayor, construction work as defined on the Florida Building Code.
You put a reference to that, as defined in the Florida Building Code?
Yes.
I got a head nod yes from Doreen. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, yeah, I think the follow-up to that would be, what does it say on the, on the building code? I don't know.
I'm looking, I'm looking that up.
Okay.
There's a lot of things, I mean.
Can I ask you, so what are we trying to accomplish? So what would you, what do you think this would do for residents and for everybody? It's just a minimize noise during the weekends.
Absolutely.
How much of that, how much of your noise ordinance are related for off holiday, off days? So if you, if you were to report, which it would be great to see before we pass this ordinance, can you let us know what percentage is usually related to complaints on noise in construction?
I would say 100%.
All of them. It's because people wait until Christmas to do stuff.
Right.
I mean, exaggerating here, but on any holiday, that's when stuff happens.
Absolutely, yeah. After hours and noise.
Yeah.
Well, I, look, I, we've already kind of all mentioned, I think, that we're on board for this idea. So I don't want to take us out of, you know, the agreement, the agreement that we all seem to have so far. What I think the best move forward would be at this point is to have Brad bring it back to us on second read to include the definition of construction pursuant to the Florida Building Code so we can review it then. We still have an opportunity to say no if we don't like it, but to sit around and wait for Brad to pull it up and read it to us and we all consider it, I think that's, I want us to move on. So I think that that's probably the best point is to say we're, we're in favor of, of the restriction, but with a little bit more of a narrow, narrowly defined scope in that Brad can provide it to us on second read. That's what I would recommend at this point.
I want to see it in writing, yes.
Can I ask on my end, I would just ask for that report. If you have, if you can pull, how many times has this happened? In a six-month period, I don't know, 12, I don't know how you put it out, but give us context of how often. Thank you.
Bring it to the next one.
Thanks, Doreen. So Brad, did you pick up on that?
I just want to make sure I understand. So.
Yeah.
I, so what you're asking me to do is on 18.4.1, which says the erection including excavation, demolition, alteration or repair of any building or delivery of materials other than as, at the following times is prohibited, you want me to try to tailor that to a definition of construction, whatever that might be, onto the Florida Building Code and bring that back before you?
Well, what about adding the definition to 18.1? Construction within this section shall be defined as construction as delineated by the Florida Building Code.
Well, I, I mean, I can do that.
Is that too general? Is that too, too general? It's going to add like a wider?
I can just, I can look for a definition either in the Florida Building Code or, or otherwise for the definition of construction. I just got to make sure that if we include it in the definitions of 18.1, that it doesn't affect any of the other requirements or prohibitions that are contained in chapter 18.
Well, I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the scope and the intention of this. So I think maybe within, within the confines of 18.4.1 is probably the best place for it then.
Right, because that's, that would be my concern. If we, if we put a definition into, into 18.1, that definition applies to the entire chapter.
Right, okay.
Whereas you could, you can have different definitions under different sections of a chapter for the purposes of restricting certain conduct.
So then why don't we focus on 18.4.1 then?
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was, that's what I thought you were asking.
Okay.
Okay, I, I will come up with something on, on second read. So you're passing it on first read as is with direction, with the direction that I.
Bring back the, with the changes on second.
Yes, okay.
Hold on, we're waiting, Doreen has one more thing.
So I was, I just wanted to give an example of how the city of Miami Beach has written their ordinance. So in Miami Beach, construction is generally permitted from 7:30 AM to 6:30 PM on weekdays and 7:30 AM to 7:30 PM during daylight saving time. Construction is not allowed on Sundays or national holidays. Weekend construction is typically restricted, especially in residential areas with specific rules varying by zoning. Waivers for hours outside these limits may be granted for emergencies or circumstances that require specific permit process. And that's what I wanted to mention. They can have the ordinance the way it is with general words, but if they need waivers for specific things, maybe that would be, can be added into the ordinance.
Well, that's, that's on 18.4.2.
But the language.
18.4, 18.4.2, 18.4.3, there are exceptions. People can apply for exceptions to, to that restriction. Is that right, Brad?
The ordinance on 18.4.2, yes, that's talking about permits for work during.
So there are ways for them to, to be exempt from it if they apply for a special permit for it.
Correct.
But the, the, what you just read.
The ordinance itself is restricted. No construction. It doesn't describe what construction is. It says no construction allowed on Sundays and no construction on national holidays.
I, I understand, and I just don't know if maybe somewhere else in their code, they define what construction means. So they're using it as a defined term. So I think within, within the specific 18.4, if we can try to have a better understanding of what that means, so we're trying to cut out certain things that homeowners are trying to do when they're not working. I do that. I do my work when I'm not working at the house, so I don't want to get hit with a code violation. But if, if we can see that from Brad, maybe to give us a little more clarity on what specifically is included in that, it might be helpful.
And I would say he looks at the, the noise ordinance as well and see how he can tweak it to allow residents to work certain hours so their neighbors don't complain about the noise. If they can give them time, you know, windows in which they can do their work, maybe neighbors would be more understanding.
Understood. Doreen, thank you very much.
And let me, let me just add one thing, Jonathan, while we're talking about this, this particular topic. At some point, not, probably not today, but we're going to need to address also, we've talked about this in the past, but we've never gotten to it, 16.3.2, where it talks about needing a, not, not needing a permit for anything that's less than $100, right? We all know that we go to Home Depot and, and 100 bucks is nothing. So I don't know when this was, yeah, I don't know when, when this was written, but we, we also need to address that, that monetary amount that's, that's not feasible or reasonable.
So.
Yeah.
Al, so Al and Brad.
Yes.
So you understand, we were talking about 16.3.2 and that's talking about the $100 cap on, on unpermitted work. Can we make a note, please, for us to take a look at that? And we, we have one of our former commissioners in here with us. She, she made a comment that we, they, she thinks that they'd preview, the commission previously voted to increase that. Would you mind, please, when you get an opportunity, take a look to see, one, if it was increased and maybe just not corrected here? And if not, can we please make a note to address it so we can increase it or talk about increasing it, should I say?
Yeah, I remember talking to Valerie about this once before, because this had come up once before and, and Valerie had pulled up her notes. There was a discussion amongst the commission about raising that, but there was never a formal part of it, is what this, this brought to me. So that, that is something we can look at and we can put forth some type of amendment to 16.3.2.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor. I'll get with the manager. We'll see what gets, what makes sense.
Great, go ahead, Al.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, last time I checked, it was defined in the Florida Building Code. And I think some years passed. I haven't looked at it recently, but it was, it was $500 in the Florida Building Code. So we, whatever the Florida Building Code says, we should be, what the Florida, what that, what the Florida Building Code says.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind taking a look to confirm the number that they provide to give us some guidance on how we can change it, but it certainly needs to be changed. All right, so I, I think that we have the correct direction. Brad, you know what you're doing. So do we, could, if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the ordinance for the first read? With the understanding that it's coming back as amended on second.
Mayor Grove?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sumer?
Yes.
Commissioner Antler?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Huntington?
Yes.
The item, this is on first reading as amended.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Doreen, it's a good thing you're here. We might have questions for you on the next one.
Mr. Mayor, just, yeah, just to clarify, this was passed as is with directions.
Yes, passed as is with the understanding that it's coming back to us on second read with some changes.
Correct.
Yes, okay. All right, so our next ordinance is 11B, ordinance 2025-04. Brad, if you're done taking notes on all of our instruction.
Yes.
Would you please read it for us?
Yes, ordinance number 2025-04, an ordinance of the Village Commission of the Village of Biscayne Park, Florida, amending section 19.1.4, application for vacation rental license of chapter 19, Vacation Rental License Program of the Village of Biscayne Park Land Development Code to require a fire protection and life safety inspection by the Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Department as a condition of obtaining a vacation rental license, providing for inclusion in the code and scrivener's errors, providing for conflicts, providing for. providing for inclusion in the code and scrivener's errors, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Do I have a first? I think we did this, I did this backwards last time, but do we have a first and a second to move this to discussion?
First to move to discussion.
Second.
Okay. Uh, is there any public comments on twenty twenty five dash zero four? Seeing none in the log cabin, seeing none on Zoom, going once, going twice. Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and discuss. I know we have another memo for, for this one. Um, Al, is there something you want to introduce for us on the ordinance?
Yeah, so um, Mr. Mayor, the uh, our co-compliance director was proactive in it, in, in this ordinance. She had uh, reached out to Miami-Dade County Fire Department when they had come and made a presentation. She had uh, researched and saw what other cities are doing and that they're requiring uh, inspections, uh, fire inspections for multifamily uh, use and multifamily would, would, would be considered uh, Airbnb. So she, when our, the fire chief came here, she got a contact uh, uh, number for the um, for the, for the representative from the fire department that, that handled those, uh, all these type of issues. She researched it with him, got more information with him. So uh, let me call her up so she can give you more information about it. But I think it's an excellent uh, uh, um, shows an excellent work on behalf of our, our co-compliance director and being proactive and looking for ways to improve our village and be uh, be responsive to our residents. And uh, so we would, we're looking for your support on this ordinance. I think it's very important that the village needs it. So I'll turn it over to Doreen.
Thanks, Al. The baton has been passed. Doreen, you're up.
So um, in the past, we did inspections, we did fire inspections. We are very, we are trained in um, inspecting, doing fire inspections, but we are not trained at the level that the fire and I, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at you, that the, the fire prevention does it in the county. So when the chief came here and did a presentation, I approached him because we needed to change some things in the ordinance. There was something we weren't doing right, which was the detectors that we allowed in the village and our, our code was not specific, with battery operated. Uh, when I read what the county is doing, um, or what the, the state statute allows, um, that I realized we were doing it wrong. Because the state um, only allows um, fire detectors that are attached to the grid in the house. So um, I worked with the fire department, um, with the county to come up with the wording. And I had Brad, Brad was very instrumental in, in um, putting this together as well. So now we would like to add this into the ordinance where when we do, when we, um, before we issue a permit, the county has to go and inspect um, the Airbnb, the property to make sure that the um, detectors are.
Wired.
Wired correctly.
Okay. Any other commentary?
Uh, just that the, this is a great thing because it, uh, it's echoed in the Florida building code for new construction. So by uh, making these Airbnbs come up to standard for renting them, it's moving more uh, households into the current standard, which is hardwired, not battery, because battery is no good.
If, if I may.
And on uh, yeah.
Bye, Brad.
No, we'll go, go right, Commissioner. So. You might, you, the question you're posing may be what I was about to say, so go ahead.
No, I was just wondering, this is just for short-term rentals? So it's nothing regarding the rest of residents that might be already, um, you know, having a battery-operated fired um, detector.
No, this is specific for short-term rentals, um, properties that are rented out to the public. Um, and it's a safety, major safety issue and.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you and I think it's fantastic. I understand why it's there. I'm just wondering when we pull permits for new construction, when we have all the sorts of renovations happening from owner, you know, based instead, why are we not suggesting the same?
Didn't you say it's part of building code?
Commissioner, we are. And actually, it hits close to home in my own home. I, I put an addition on twenty nineteen. Uh, my new addition has hardwired. My uh, old home does not, it's battery. So it is in the Florida building code that when you do an addition of uh, renovation to a space, uh, to that level, it is required that you, you bring it up to.
And is it something that start in July twenty twenty five that is on the building code, not before? It, it's an old thing. So it's just for rent, short-term rentals that it's now specifically required an additional inspection for the licensing.
Commissioner, let, let me answer that, because Commissioner, the, the statute and the, the Florida regulation.
Yeah.
Florida administrative code provision, it's, it's been around for a couple of years. So this is something that Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, when I spoke to them, they've been doing these inspections. And they will do them in the vision, in the village. Um, what we're basically doing in this ordinance is adding a requirement to the vacation rental license program that the village has that the individual who is applying for a license or applying for a renewal of their license must provide the proof that the unit was inspected by the Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Department and found to be in compliance with the regulations of the statute and the Florida administrative.
Got it. But that's something we, we're making up is the, the county's fire department is suggesting this changes. Okay.
They, they, they have been doing these inspections. We're now requiring that, that applicants for a license to run a vacation rental home in the village show proof that they've had the inspection and they are in compliance.
Understood. Thank you.
And they're, they're doing this at a different level than we were. They are more advanced in um, the way of, of they do their inspections and ensuring safe fire safety.
Good. Doreen, thank you. Um, are there any other questions for Doreen or for the, uh, the attorney or the manager before we have the clerk call the roll? Are you done? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Groth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smera?
Yep.
Commissioner Angela?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Huntington?
Yes.
The item passes on first reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thanks, Doreen. We might have another one for you, so stick around. Um, all right. So Brad, could you please uh, read our next ordinance, which is twenty twenty five dash zero five, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty twenty five uh, dash zero five, an ordinance of the village commission of the village of Biscayne Park, Florida, amending section four point four, community residential homes of chapter four, housing of the village of Biscayne Parks. Let, let land development code by establishing procedures for the review and approval of certified recovery residences and creating a process for requesting a reasonable accommodation from any land use regulation that serves to prohibit the establishment of a certified recovery residence in accordance with section three eighty seven point four eight seven, subparagraph fifteen A, Florida statutes, providing for inclusion in the code and scrivener's errors, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for repealer and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Brad, thank you. Uh, do I have a first and a second to move the ordinance into discussion?
First to move to discussion.
Second.
Okay. Uh, public comment on ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five? None in the cabin, seeing none on Zoom, going once, going twice. Okay. Um, all right. So let's go ahead and move to discussion. Um, I don't have a, uh, Mr. Manager, I don't have a separate memo for this. Is there any introduction to the item that you'd like to provide?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, um, Mr. Mayor, the city attorney, the village attorney worked on this directly.
Okay.
So I, I might be, yes, I can, I'm prepared to explain. So the legislature, yes, of course. The legislature in the last session passed a, a bill which codified um, this regulation, which essentially is chapter, um, Florida statute, chapter three ninety seven point three one one thirty nine, which essentially requires the village to have a process in which you can provide a special accommodation to, or at least review or request for, for special accommodation for a recovery residence who desires to operate in your village in an area where it is unpermitted based on your land development code. You presently have no process in which that a entity or a property owner can ask for that special accommodation. And this is a procedure that is put into place by which a property owner could, could now ask for that special accommodation if, if they so desire to try to operate. A recovery residence, and it only applies to recovery residences, which are essentially um, either alcohol or drug. I, I don't like to use the word facility, but group homes um, is what it, what it's a better definition. And so that's essentially what this is doing. It's now complying with, with Florida statutes and it has to be placed into effect under the bill by January first of next year.
Thanks, Brad. So if we're interpreting this correctly, then this is something that state law is already requiring. So it's something that we have to, we're required to adopt before Jan. one?
Yes, it, it's under Florida statute chap, or the chapter two, twenty twenty five one eight two, which the governor signed in July with Senate Bill nine fifty four. We have to, the, the village has to have this in place by January one, twenty twenty six.
Okay. Um, I don't have any questions. Are there any questions from the commission before we ask the clerk for roll? Okay, let's uh, wait one second.
I'm sorry if there's a question I'm not hearing.
No, no question. We're just uh, about to call, uh, have the, the clerk call the roll on the vote.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
Ending any other remaining questions, which I don't know that there are any. Indeed. No worries. So we, uh, there aren't any questions, uh, for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five, Commissioner, do you have any questions before we have, okay? Okay, great. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Groth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smera?
Yes.
Commissioner Angela?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Huntington?
Yes.
The item passes on first reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thanks, Brad. All right. So stepping back to our resolution items that were moved from consent, our first item is going to be item ten A, which is resolution two zero two five dash sixty. Uh, Brad, can you please read the resolution for us?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty five sixty, a resolution of the village commission of the village of Biscayne Park, Florida, waiving formal competitive bidding procedures pursuant to sections two dash one three nine of the village's code of ordinance is improving an agreement with, it should be ERC Security Consulting Inc. Um, for the purchase and installation of, of a security sa, camera system in and around the village hall police department facility in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand four hundred eleven dollars and sixty cents. Authorizing the village manager to execute said agreement and do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Brad, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion, a second to move the resolution to discussion?
Motion to move to discussion, limiting discussion to five minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Okay. Uh, so we have the resolution. Commissioner Amser, I know you requested it be moved from consent. Do, um, is there a specific question or reason that you wanted to move it from consent?
Yes. Um, so maybe this is um, for the she, for, or the village manager, if you want to join us for the microphone. Uh, I was wondering first why the waiver is needed, um, that it can, can go through our process or regular bidding process?
Yeah, I can answer that, uh, Commissioner. It's, it's so, it's two thousand dollars over our limit. Our limit is ten thousand dollars, so it's twelve thousand four hundred eleven dollars.
Okay, I get that. Uh, and so can I ask who assessed what was needed? Was it IT? Was it the, within the police department?
So this was um, both the, the police department and I think IT was brought in uh, to make an assessment. And these cameras aren't working right now. There's no, there's no security cameras uh, working. So that's why we, we try to uh, rush this to get this fixed as soon as possible.
Has it been there for, like this for a while or?
It's been, it's been like this since I, I've been here, Commissioner, so.
Okay.
It was before that, even before that.
Okay. And then the vendors that were highlighted, were they all given the same scope of work? Was there an email that came out saying exactly what was needed and the same, I'm guessing, to all of them?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, and how were they identified? Are they recommended by municipalities? Was there, there's a web search? How, how do we know this?
So they, we looked at the people that have done business with us before. And then we also looked at, we had several recommendations uh, from IT and from uh, staff. So we looked at those vendors.
Are there going to be any subscription or storage fees that is not within the purchasing price that is included? So I guess I was trying to understand the technicalities that were um, attached, whether there is a storage included and how often or the licensing. I'm trying to understand if this is a one-time cost or there will be a recurring one after.
Yeah, so I, you know, Chief, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I think this is a one-time cost, just for the installation of the cameras.
And so where does the storage happen or what we've been, what we were.
Storage, the storage is in the DVR or NVR. Uh, itself for approximately ninety days and that's all we need.
So for ninety days and then it just starts to delete and it's always the latest nineties that, that you get?
That's correct.
Got it. Um, and lately are the, 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 warranty, um, do you have any support after?
Three years.
Three years and it's, and the training for staff?
There's not much training to do. It's.
You don't need any of that. Okay, so no additional charges.
Basically the same as an in-house CCTV system with a DVR except it uses an NVR.
Yeah.
Uh, is higher capacity and uh, obviously uh, through fiber optics.
Got it. All right. Those were my questions. Thank you. Um, I am not a big fan of just explaining that because we're two thousand dollars extra, it's okay to not bid. Um, we have a process, a charter specifically says anything about ten grand. Shouldn't, um, you know, uh, unless there is a specific reason, I think that was my, my first question, but um, appreciate the feedback. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions from the commission on resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty?
No, I think my, I, again, I was also the one that pulled this to, for discussion. I think it was, I agree with Commissioner that when we have a, a rule that says ten thousand dollars, we have to have it. But I think they explained the extra two thousand, so I'm okay with the two thousand going over the limit.
Okay, very good. Uh, so then with this, this, discussion concluded, all in favor of the resolution?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, it's a no for me.
Okay, our next item is going to be ten B, which is the renewal with uh, CAP government.
Yeah, so I'd have a question here and I, I.
All right, let me just have Brad read it out of the record, Commissioner.
You have to read the resolution.
Brad, can you uh, read twenty twenty five dash six one for us, please?
Yes. Resolution of the village commission of the village of Biscayne Park, Florida, approving a renewal term with CAP Government Inc. For building permitting and support services, authorizing the village manager to execute said renewal term and all additional renewal terms as provided for in the original agreement, which took effect on September one, twenty twenty two. And do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for incorporation of recitals and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Brad, thanks. Do I have a first and a second to move to discussion?
First to move to discussion, limiting discussion to five minutes.
I'm second.
Okay. Uh, all right. So Commissioner, uh, this was one of the ones that you would ask, we've moved, removed from consent, um, so.
All right. Thank you. Um, I was wondering, so we have a contract with CAP for the first three years. And the idea of this renewal is that, or any renewal for any contract is, it was tough for a second to understand that we have the vendor that we need. That there's no issues in terms of commitments or, you know, contract or adaptations based on service or uh, you know, technology, whatever, this is the opportunity to do that. So I think I'm trying to understand, um, it says here is in the best interest for the village to do that. There was no. I'm trying to understand, it says here is in the best interest for the village to do that. There was no memo attached. So, you know, at some point, if you remember months ago, I did come forward with residents claiming there was a delay process on on the log, basically. The the permitting was taken too long and the idea was to get back some sort of report on this to the commission so that we can understand, you know, the CAPS doing their doorwork and the inspections are happening on time, that the answer is that that never came to the commission. I had a meeting with CAP, myself and and the and the and the manager at the time that was in a report to showcase that. It was more an explanation of how it works. So I'm wondering why, you know, this is our first opportunity to stop and say, how are we doing? So what assessment was done with CAP to understand that it is in the best interest to continue with them? That was my first question.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
Yes, please.
So Commissioner, there's, there's not many vendors that do this. CAP is probably the longest serving vendor, building permitting expediter or or government services, permanent government services that has serviced Miami Dade County for probably thirty or forty years now. So there's, there are not too many around. I've been very happy with their service. And speaking to the rest of the commission, they they have not expressed any concerns. You and I met with the building official for more than two hours, I think, or several, several days. I think we we met more than one occasion. We went over your concerns with 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 the building official. I think that one complaint that we got was an isolated complaint. But I, I, you know, I don't, I don't receive complaints on a daily basis about their their services. I think they're the employees that they give us are highly professional, some of the best in South Florida. They hire some of the best. And I think they they provided us excellent service. I don't, I couldn't, I don't see why we would go out to bid and not exercise our option at this point.
Okay. So I think for me, and and that's exactly where I was going, I think, never seeing something tangible in terms of report is a missed opportunity. That's why this contract renewals time frames exist. So do we have a contract activated at this point or is it expired?
We have an active contract at this point.
Okay, so we're, we have the opportunity to renew exactly as it is. And this will go for another year, right, until we do the review?
Yeah, there's two, two one year options. So this is the first.
So this is the first time in three years that we put a pause. Otherwise, the contract, and that was sort of my feedback to Bradley. I mean, the contract would have said, I'll meet you in five years so we can talk about the service. But it has the opportunity to come in three so that we ask these questions. I wouldn't want to see documents or, you know, feedback showing here is a log, there's other reports that show that they're delivering in time to make the decision today to say, let's renew. I think the idea of, you know, we're happy, as a manager being happy is not enough. We need to just check with the backlog, with staff, with residents feedback. And of course, I'm not saying suggesting that the service is not good in any way. I just think in our opportunity to approve this for another year, this was the sort of the information I would have liked to see. We only met once. I actually had to push for the meeting to happen because again, the information, the request from the commission was that information come for to the commission and it didn't. So I think again, this is when we ask a request for a report for the, from the commission to a vendor, it has to come back to the commission so it makes public, so we can talk about it, so residents are aware, we're checking the vendors that we hire. That's my feedback. I think the rest of the questions, I'll leave it to that.
So Al, just very quickly on that point. Do we, could we ask that CAP be here to do a presentation? I know we have presentations monthly. Could we set something up where CAP would come to us and provide some of the information that the commissioners highlighted?
So if you recall, Mr. Mayor, we started last, I think it was last December, we started with the police department and did department reports and the building department was one of those. So we're going to start, start that up again. I'm probably going to start that at the first of the year, starting with the police department and have every department make a yearly recap presentation. But let me say this, Mr. Mayor, that each, each month you receive a report from the building department. If you look in your agenda, there's a report of all their activity and also co-compliance, which falls under CAP, also submits a monthly report.
Yeah, in my, in my end, I think I wouldn't necessarily push for a presentation in any way. I just wanted to highlight the opportunity to bring forward that, you know, are we meeting? How, how long does the permitting process takes from A to Z? Those were my questions initially a few months ago. And I think that was still pending, just to recognize. Again, I'm, I'm super happy. I haven't heard from staff anything different in terms of CAP, but I think it's due diligence to the village. That's what we're supposed to see. And there was no memo attached to this. So those were my questions to sort of understand where I am at before I vote.
Understood. Okay. I want to be respectful to Commissioner Huntington's motion to limit discussion. So if there is no further questions at this time, hearing none, I'll go ahead and ask for a commission vote on two thousand twenty five dash sixty one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nope. Sorry.
Okay, the next item I have is ten C, which is two thousand twenty five dash sixty two is with our lobbying agreement with David Caserta. Brad, would you please go ahead and read the resolution for us?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty five dash six two. A resolution of the village commission of the village of Biscayne Park, Florida, approving a three year professional service agreement between the village of Biscayne Park and David T. Caserta Government Relations, Inc., to provide state lobbying services for the village of Biscayne Park in an amount not to exceed ninety four thousand, two hundred dollars and no cents for services rendered and reimbursable expenses, authorizing the village manager to execute said agreement and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Do I have a motion to second to move the resolution to discussion?
Make motion to move it for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So again, Al, is this something that you'd like to provide an introduction for?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So our, our state lobbyist, David Caserta, has been the village's lobbyist for as long as I can remember, maybe thirty, forty years here. And I'll have the exact number, but he's been here for a very, very long time. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you've had a chance to work with him directly in the last, in the last legislative session. I'm sure you're going to work closely with him this year. I think he does an excellent job for us. He, he was on a one year renewal. He's been, he's been charging the village twenty five thousand dollars a year. I don't think you're going to find any other lobbyists that will charge you do the services that he provides for that amount. He's up there, he's up in Tallahassee already, or he would be here at the, at the commission meeting this evening. But this, he, I talked to him, originally this was just for a one year renewal. We talked to him and said, why, you know, this is a lot of work to put, put these items on the agenda. Why are we just going for a one year? So we agreed to a three year where he would, I think it's an increase of two hundred dollars a month for the, for the second and third year. So we were asked your support in passing this.
Okay, thanks, Al. So Commissioner Amzor, I think this is one you requested be removed from consent. Is, do you have any questions or items you want to discuss with respect to this?
Yeah, so I think that clarifies. My first one was related. Again, I didn't understand context for trying to negotiate a higher contract or rate. So is the idea in this case that we haven't paid him more and it's been a static sort of cost and we're trying to raise? Or where's the rationale to increase the contract? Did David ask for it?
Yeah, Commissioner, we, I had spoken with Mr. Caserta. And, you know, all expenses are going up, so he's looking his travel expenses, his, his cost of staying in a hotel when he's in Tallahassee. Those are going up, so that's why he's asking for that minimum of two hundred dollars a month for the second and third year.
Okay, so the additional expense will be just for covering hotels and any expenses on his end?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. And so in the other one, and I think I clarified that before, it doesn't need to be an RFP because of professional services. So in this case, we don't need it. And what, what is the, the idea of extending for three years? The reason I bring it up is last year there was a, there was a feedback given to David about, you know, whether he was doing what he was expected, you know, from the commission, whether there was no feedback received from the manager. And then we found out a lot of that had to do with reports. Then now we're coming back and forth. They were staying on an email maybe or there was a flow of communication that was you know, conducive, conducive to, to efficiency in any way. Why, why three years and not keep it as it is just to give us the opportunity to, to have those conversations?
Well, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, if I could. So Commissioner, as I just stated, it takes a lot of work to put these resolutions on. And this is, he's been with us, it's, it's kind of ridiculous. He's been with the village for so long. Three years is a standard for the industry, for a state lobbyist, that they have an agreement for three years. So we're consistent with what those other cities in South Florida are doing.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I guess, go ahead.
Just, Mr. Mayor, just to, so the commissioners are aware, the, the agreement also, while it's a three year agreement, there is a, there is a way for the village to terminate the agreement if you do that. You can terminate it as long as you do that prior to the next legislative session starting, which would be November first or whatever that year. There's no cost to the village.
Perfect.
And if you terminated during, yes, if you terminated during the, during the legislative session, then you would still owe the remainder of the balance of the contract for that year to Mr. Caserta.
Thank you. And then I'll take the opportunity to say that he has been more than engaging, at least on my end, always answering the phone and always be available. And I'm very appreciative of what he does for us. Those were my questions. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions on, on this item for David Caserta?
No, just one. I think he's doing a good job. You know, for the salary that we're paying him, if he gets us one cut, one grant or something, you know, one money that comes up that pays more than what we're paying him, it's worth it. So I have no problem. He's been with us a long time. So I have no problem with this.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of approving the resolution?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, that's ten C. Ten D was on our consent. So ten E is our next one, which is yeah, ten D remained on consent. So ten E, which is resolution twenty twenty five dash six three, adopting Miami Dade County local, Miami Dade County local mitigation strategy. Brad, would you please read the resolution for us?
No, ten, it's not that.
Ten E? Ten D is the
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's the F dot item. I apologize. They're, they're a little close in their spacing. Right, ten, twenty twenty five dash six four, acceptance of funds and approving agreement with F dot.
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty five sixty four. A resolution of the village commission of the village of Biscayne Park, Florida, accepting grant funds and approving an agreement with the United States Department of Transportation's Federal Highway Administration for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, which is SS four A, to obtain supplemental funding in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to develop a comprehensive safety action plan and authorizing the village to expend matching funds in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars, authorizing the village manager to execute said agreement and do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Amzor, I think this was one of the ones that you asked be removed from consent. Are there any questions?
Yes, I just, I, I wanted to understand. So there was a, in the memo that said, we, we received this at some point in January, twenty twenty four, but it wasn't fully submitted. If the manager can explain as to how, what was missing, how, you know, and, and sort of my next question is, what's next? Because again, trying to understand if we, once, what does it mean to fully receive this grant if, if at some point we were told in, in January, twenty twenty four, we did? And what happens next?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so Commissioner, if you read the, the cover memo and, and I reviewed the tape for that date, you were told during the commission meeting that the, we had received a hundred thousand dollars and those funds were in our account, which wasn't, wasn't accurate at all. So this is a, this is a reimbursement grant. The, the, apparently, our application was never perfected. When I got here, I was under the impression too that we, we had received the grant and the funds were there and we just needed to do the study. And then as, as I further dug into it and I started, started to talk to the state and talk to the the federal government, I found out, no, that our, our application was never perfected. So we had worked on that, spent quite a few months on, on with the Federal Highway Administration to perfect our grant and perfect our application. That has, was submitted and approved. So the next step is for you to approve this tonight. And then we would have to go out to bid for our, to bring in a consultant. And I, I have to review the, the agreement one time, one more time and talk to the Federal Highway Administration. If, if we don't have to go out to bid, we just bring in somebody, want somebody from our pool of contractors. But I think we may have to go out to bid and then, you know, award that bid. And then they start, start to work. Our, our amount that we're required for is twenty five thousand dollars. And the hundred thousand dollars is reimbursable, reimbursable. It's over a five year period. I hope it's not going to take five years for us to complete the study. But that's, that's what the grant is about.
Okay, so yeah, so that answers my, my first question. And then the second was to see expectations as to when we would see this in action again. If, if we thought we had this money, we didn't. And here we are, close to ending of twenty twenty five. When do you think realistically we'll have something in front of the commission related to putting this money to work?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, so Commissioner, we were, I'm going to have, once you approve this, if you approve it tonight, I'm going to reach out to Federal Highway Administration and have an in-depth conversation with us, with them about the bidding process and, or whether we can just use one of our full contractors. If we want to use one of our full contractors, it would be a more expedited process. So I really can't give you that, that answer.
Okay. We'll keep track of that. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. Thanks, Mr. Manager. Are there any other questions on twenty twenty five dash six four?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So all in favor of approving the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I believe I have H is, ten H is our next one, which is the resolution twenty twenty five dash six seven, the paving resolution. I think I read that right this time. Brad, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, sir. Resolution number twenty twenty five dash six seven, a resolution of the village commission of the village of Biscayne Park, Florida, awarding request for proposal twenty twenty five dash zero zero one to Janice M. Riley, Inc., doing business as the paving lady for the milling, resurfacing and stripping, or stripping improvements of the village log cabin parking lot and surrounding pavement, authorizing the village manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Janice M. Riley, Inc., doing business as the paving lady, subject to review by the village attorney in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and do all other things necessary to effectuate this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Do I have a motion to second to move to discussion?
Motion to move to discussion, limiting discussion to five minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. So Commissioner Amzor, I think this was one of the ones you'd requested we remove from consent.
Yeah.
Present your questions?
I just have a quick one. I was wondering, so when it I just have a quick one, I was wondering, so when it comes to bidding process, might might be a question for Brad. We don't, it could be just one vendor that comes forward, there is no need for three minimum, is that correct?
Correct, so you would put out a request for proposals and you would get as many bidders as decide to bid on the project. The bids would come in and sealed, there's a specific date in which you would open the sealed bids.
Yeah.
There's then an evaluation process and an awarding process based on the evaluation recommendation by the manager or the evaluation team.
Got it, and I saw that, it was very good to see the scorecard put together. I was wondering then, when it comes to making this public, since it's a bidding process, who handles that? When we request.
Once, so once, once you award the bid, it would become public.
Okay. But I'm saying, if I want to participate in the bid?
So if you mean if there's, are you asking me, how does a proposer become aware that that they request his proposals out there? You you advertise, the village advertises that they have a platform that they they put the requests for proposals out on. I think it's, actually, I'm drawing a blank, Al, the manager would know the name of it, I'm trying.
Demand Star.
Demand Star, thank you. And there's, and then bidders or bidders would then provide their proposals and submit them.
All right, that was it, those were my questions, thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioner, thanks, Brad. Any other questions on the resolution?
No.
None, okay, all right, so all in favor of the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six-seven?
Aye.
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 Okay, next one is ten I, which is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six-nine. And Brad, would you please read the resolution for us?
Yes, sir, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six-nine, a resolution of the Village Commission of the Village of Biscayne Park, Florida, ratifying the award of an agreement with Big Dog Stump Grinding Services and Tree Removal Inc. for the removal, stump grinding and hauling of various trees located within the village determined to be potential hazards to persons and or property as identified by an arborist in an amount not to exceed six thousand three hundred fifty dollars and no cents and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Do I have a motion and a second to move to discussion?
Motion to move to discussion, limiting discussion to five minutes.
Okay, okay. All right, so Commissioner Amzler, I know you, this was the one you removed, I know we started talking about it. There was one question, I don't want to jump out ahead of you, but there was one question that I had for the manager on this one because it it came up during public comment from Kate Davis and this 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 idea of a a risk assessment certification for an arborist. And I know, Al, you'd mentioned that you you can check with John. But is this something, is this something, until we have a better understanding of of what this certification is and whether it's held by Mr. Allred in in forming his conclusions and opinions with respect to these trees, you know, it's something that I would certainly be interested in seeing. And I would I would put it to the rest of the commission if that's something that the rest of the commission would be interested in seeing before we move forward on the resolution.
Yes.
That was the only thing I was going to propose, Commissioner Amzler, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to talk about with respect to the item?
Um, yes, so I I think, you know, it was great to hear Kate come with this sort of information. I really didn't know that normally a risk assessment is part of a, you know, certain certification that arborists have. So it certainly is something that we would want to do as well as to let the Parks and Parkways Board know to start working on what the plan for replacement of the streets would be. But my specific questions were, you know, this is similar to what we've seen in the prior agendas where this falls within the authority of the manager, we don't, you don't need approval from the commission to move forward with six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And it was also the first time I saw that we're rat ratifying within the the Flori- ratifying the the award of an agreement. So I was just trying to understand why is pushed as a resolution and what do you need the ratification from us?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Sure.
So to answer your your first question, the arborist couldn't be there tonight, but he was texting me saying that he heard of that certification, but it's not necessary to write under Florida statute one sixty-three point oh four five. That's not a requirement to write the reports or make an determination if a tree needs to come down. The only thing is that his certification, ISA certified arborist, which he has under Florida statute, he's complying fully with Florida statute. So I hope that answers your question with respect to that. Commissioner Amzler, you asked, that six thousand three hundred fifty dollars is not within, which, it's over five thousand dollars, that's why we had to get three bids, and that's why it's on the commission this evening.
So that wasn't my question, my question, why is it here? It could be part of your report, this is part of your authority to move forward with that amount of spend. What do you feel is important for the commission to approve it?
No, no, it isn't, Commissioner, it needs, it's over five thousand dollars. My limit is five thousand dollars without getting three bids. So I needed three bids and then approval from the commission.
Okay, so that answers my question. I think for me is the risk assessment qualification, which is something we found out today. And again, you 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 have, you have not moved forward with this, right, in any way? So you're waiting for us to, yeah.
Go ahead, Brad.
I think there's some compute, if I may, I think there's some confusion.
Okay.
So, un- under your purchasing code, the manager is correct, he he needs, there is three bids that are required. You have three classifications under your, under your purchasing authority. Anything under twenty-five hundred dollars can be purchased by the manager or a department director without any quotes or any other requirements, can be purchased directly. Anything between greater than twenty-five thousand but less than ten thousand requires three informal quotes. But once they obtain the formal quotes, the authorities within managers' authorities, spending and purchasing authority based on those quotes to award those, that project to the lowest, most responsive bidder. Anything over ten thousand dollars would require formal bidding, which is, which would be a request for proposal, which is the process we discussed with the with the paving lady.
Okay.
So I think there might be a misunderstanding as to the, as to the purchasing authorities under the code.
Yeah, and so the the reason I brought it up, and again, it's something that came up in the last meeting as well. I don't think it's it's for the commission to approve this, again, it's within the power of the 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 manager to do. I think when you ask or ratify a a feedback, at the end of a day, is pushing the responsibility upwards. And I I disagree with that, so and and beyond that, the risk management, risk, I'm sorry, risk management. Risk assessment qualification is something I would like to see in in arborists for the village of Biscayne Park. Again, we're not the Miami-Dade Code, canopy is important, we've heard enough about residents wanting, you know, better processes in place, so I'm glad the Parks and Parkway thinks SOPs are recommended. It was recommended by, you know, in order to even move a tree ordinance forward. But in this case, I think it's something I would like to see, you know, if if you ask for feedback, that would be my feedback. I would just try to look for someone that has all the qualifications that put us in a in a better place than what we were before these trees issues happened with the Australian pines and all of that.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, sure.
So, so, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, when when I got here, I said that I'm going to be fully transparent in everything I do. And I think removing trees, any trees, is is in the interest of the of the Village Commission and of the Village of the residents. And the only way for me to to uh give you this information is put it on, put it on the agenda. And you saw by putting this on the agenda, we had some residents that was concerned concerned tonight about the arborist that he didn't have this special certification. So it is something I learned and that's something I'm going to look into now with our arborists. But if I had just done this and within my authority and not trying to be transparent, none of this would have come out. So I'll I'll do whatever you want me to do. But I think it's in the in the best interest of the village to bring these matters that our residents have an interest on what trees we're moving and why we're moving them. So that's why I put it on, if you if you don't want it on the agenda in the future, I certainly won't put it on.
There was a question also that was brought up by a resident, there was an answer related to the, how is this arborist that comes, do we have an arborist? So I just want to understand, are we paying this arborist for this work or is he doing this pro bono?
He 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 receives a fee for each of these reports.
Okay, so we have a contract with with this arborist already?
Yeah, we, well, he's a, there's a minimum fee, Commissioner, for each of these reports. It's about two hundred and fifty dollars for each of these reports.
I know, but so do we have a contract for this?
We don't have a contract, it's within my authority.
Okay, so you're just within your authority deciding to spend two fifty, how do we know this arborist?
He, well, your residents had recommended him to me, he's he's done work for the village in the past, past. He's he's consulted with the Parks and Parkway's in the past, he's uh, he does work for the for the village of, I mean, for the city of North Miami. So his name was given to me by residents.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you.
Just one comment I just want to make. Mr. City Manager, I want you to continue to put this stuff on the agenda because transparency, I would agree with you, is very important, that's one of the things that the residents are entitled to. So I want to continue, you know, you putting this stuff on 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 the agenda for transparency, that's everything I have to say.
You can say, Brad.
I will concur with Commissioner Samaria, I do enjoy having these things on for transparency, especially when it can be considered trees. With the workshop we just had, there's very, you know, big interest when it comes to trees. But I will say that we are well past five minutes, I have done my research on this this arborist, I am ready to vote yes on this and move past this.
Well, let me just say how I feel about him bringing these things to the commission. I think you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, Al, to be quite honest with you. So you do what you feel is in your best interest and in the best interest of the village. And I just tell you to do, you know, to to go with your gut.
Is there any other questions or discussion on the item, on the resolution?
No, those were my questions, thank you.
Okay, any others from the commission?
No.
Bring them, okay, so let's vote, let's please vote on the on the approval of the resolution, excuse me.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'm gonna say no, just because I had more, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the risk assessment, but I'm still in favor of of the preservation of the safety of the residents. But I'd just like to hear more about that if we could in the future, Al, if you could look into that for us, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll do an LTC one.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that concludes ten I. So ten J, K, and L, we deferred to the next agenda. And that having concluded the ordinances, I know one of the discussion items was moved, Commissioner Amzler, that brings us, yeah, sorry, my agenda keeps jumping around on me, twelve A. Brad, it's Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six-eight, would you mind, please, reading it onto the record for us?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six-eight, a resolution of the Village Commission of the Village of Biscayne Park, Florida, approving the payment of fourteen thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and eleven cents to the law firm of DGIM Law, P L L C, for reimbursement for legal services performed relating to the representation of Jonathan E. Roth and his capacity as mayor of the Village of Biscayne Park, authorizing the city manager to all things necessary in further this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Thanks very much, Brad. Is there a a motion in a second to move to discussion?
Motion to move to discussion.
Second.
Okay, so this is an item that I asked Brad to draft for me, so I'll just give a quick introduction of it. There's a lot of information provided in the backup. There's statutory authority and it's something that the the village has done in the past in reimbursing legal fees for ethics complaints and complaints otherwise lodged against charter officers, elected officials, employees. And if it's not clear from the resolution, that's what happened. I think likely everyone remembers the event that happened, we had someone come in that violated our 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 decorum rules and in my capacity as as mayor, I had to have that individual removed. And I was met with that action with a state and a Florida, a state and a Miami-Dade County ethics complaint for violating the ethics rules. In the backup, it provides that both of those items were dismissed as being legally insufficient. But in my own interest in my profession and to protect my license to practice law, I hired an attorney very quickly and my attorney is on Zoom here with us, Dan Gilchinsky. So again, I went out and I hired a private attorney very quickly because it was very important to me. One, that these claims be investigated thoroughly and vetted, knowing, well, assuming and knowing that I I did nothing wrong, which I think the ethics opinions agree with. But the big, I think the big issue for the commission to understand is that ethics violations and ethics complaints, they have Florida bar implications for me and my license to practice law and do what I need to do to provide for my family. So it was very important to me that I I go out and I get someone qualified to to help and assist me with this. And I think that by nature of the the opinions that were issued by the ethics boards, it it goes to show that Mr. Gilchinsky was effective in his his advocacy of me. There's some additional items provided in the resolution, the legal bills are there for review. The the opinions of both the Miami-Dade County Ethics Commission and the State Ethics Commission are there as well. And there's also an opinion from the Ethics Commission that says that I don't have a conflict of interest in bringing this and voting on it. Because I wanted to make that clear that I wouldn't be recusing myself, I'm I'm, it's not a violation of ethics or conflict that I'm allowed to bring this and vote on it. So we wanted to make sure we kind of checked the boxes before I brought this to the commission's attention. So I I'm certainly open to your questions, and Mr. Gilchinsky's here, as I said, on Zoom to take any questions from the commission. And any commission, I, you know, I spoke with Brad a lot about this on on the the state authority that allows for reimbursement of fees. And I would just be here for the commission's questions on on what happened and why I'm asking for this. And, you know, I don't, I think by nature of me serving in the position, I I wouldn't have been subjected to it had I not been serving. So that's where I'm in, that's what we're asking for.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment before discussion?
Yeah, if you could, please, Brad.
Just, I just, I just want to clarify something that's on the resolution.
Sure.
Exhibit B of the resolution, which is the Miami-Dade County Commission on Ethics and Public Trust Opinion, is redacted as it's attached, as it is attached to the resolution as an exhibit. That that document's a public record, but we redacted the the opinion and the initial investigation was also related to people other than Mayor Roth. And since this only relates to to the allegations that were brought by Mayor Roth, this being the resolution for reimbursement, we had redacted out any reference to any other respondents just for the purposes of this resolution. So just so you're all aware as to why there's a redacted portion of the, or certain portions are redacted on Exhibit B. That that's essentially why they were redacted.
I appreciate that, Brad, thanks for the clarification, go ahead.
Yeah, the only question, the only question I have, first off, I'm in support of this, but does our insurance cover this, one? And if our insurance doesn't, where's the money coming?
So to answer your question, and and Brad can supplement if 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 he feels necessary, that that was looked into, but it was after I had already retained private counsel. That insurance, I think, may or would provide counsel. But, you know, if we make, if we make malpractice or we make counsel demands on our carrier, you know, the rates will go up. So either way, there's there's going to be a cost associated with it. I couldn't put a number on the latter, but I I believe in Brad, feel free to chime in if you like.
Well, so you do have a policy that will that will provide, well, let me start this one. You have a policy that will cover the representation of elected officials, charter officers, and village employees with regards to ethics commission allegations, both at the state level and the county level. That would require that a claim be made at the time the complaint is 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 received and the the insurance carrier will provide counsel. So it wouldn't, it will not cover counsel of. and the insurance carrier will provide counsel. So it would, it will not cover counsel of any of those individuals' choices. I can tell you that at the time when this complaint first came out, as I stated earlier, the complaint encompassed several officials within the village. And there was a determination at some point after the mayor had retained counsel that we determined that, in fact, this would be covered and that the insurance carrier would provide coverage, to the extent that they would provide counsel. They will not reimburse for private counsel or counsel chosen, specific counsel chosen. I can tell you that from the experience, and I've had this conversation with the insurance carrier, is we've had, we have made claims for other city officials with regards to ethics complaints. And the insurance carrier is very slow in appointing counsel. And on several, at least two of them that I'm aware of, by the time counsel was appointed and clarification was given to them as to what their role was with regards to representation, the commission had already made their findings. So it was after the fact. I don't know why it's taking that long and why the delay. And again, I've had conversations with our insurance carrier about that concern, and they're trying to address it, but that's, I don't have any other information as to why or how that process takes place, other than what I've just explained.
I couldn't hear you at the end.
I don't, I don't have an answer from you in speaking to the carrier. I'm still waiting to hear back as to why there's such a delay in when, because the problem is with the ethics commissions, you have, there's different phases of the investigation, determining whether there's, you know, sufficient cause to go forward, a probable cause determination, then a formal hearing determination. And the process is a little different depending on which commission is handling the matter. But it's generally between 21 and 60 days for the initial determination, depending on the commission. It's 60 days within the county. It's 21 days within the state for that initial termination. It's taking the carrier much longer than that to provide counsel. So that creates a problem because it's untimely. And that's something that I've brought to the carrier's attention. And I'm waiting to hear back why that was and how they're planning on rectifying that.
Thanks, Brad.
So I have, I'm sorry. I have no problem with what you're doing because it does affect your life, and this is very serious. And I would have had the same situation with the ethics complaint that was filed against me. I could have went out and hired an attorney, but I chose not to until the investigation was over, which it is over. So I have no problem. The only question is, where is the $14,000 coming from? From which part? Maybe from the, out of our, where is the $14,000? That's all I wanted to know. Yeah, for the general fund? Yeah.
I would assume.
So can I speak?
Yeah, please.
So let me just start by saying that when I first saw this, I was flabbergasted. I have a lot of problems and a lot of issues with this whole thing. And it's nothing personal against you because the time that I've known you, you've been a man of integrity. And the God's honest truth is, if it was somebody else, I'd have even a bigger problem. But you say that we've asked, we've done this in the past, right? And I think you all know how I felt the last time that we were asked for attorney's fees up here. So I don't know what else you're referring besides that. Are you referring to anything specific?
No, no, just that.
No, because you made it sound like it's been done before, like several times or?
I didn't imply that.
Okay, so it's just that one particular time?
Correct.
Okay. And I think that that's a different case altogether, but whatever. But here's the problem. So I was there at the particular hearing, and I was there with your attorney, which I met, very nice gentleman. And my understanding of the resolution there was that the specific charges that were being brought were not in the purview of the Ethics Board. And so that's the reason that they dropped it. As a matter of fact, the person that was bringing these allegations was asking the board for legal advice. And the board said, we're not here to give you legal advice, because she was basically asking, where else can I go if you're not going to help me with this? So that's the reason that this was dropped. It wasn't because of any specific, it just, there was, to the Ethics Board, the allegations that were being brought were not in the purview to proceed. So that's the reason for that. So here's the thing. So when I first saw this, I blew my top. And then I had a call with the manager, and I had a call with the attorney. And as a matter of fact, Issa was on the call as well. And so I try to figure out, why are we here? Why, if we have, I was under the assumption that we had an insurance policy and that that insurance policy covered legal fees for, not just for the commission, but also for staff. And so why are we in this position? Right? So my first question is, well, did Jonathan know that this is the process, that he has to, you know, file a claim? And obviously, the answer is no. He found out after the fact. After I asked the question, the email was sent out. The manager asked Brad the question, and I guess that's when Brad sent out the email explanation saying, hey, you have to file a claim first. But then he told me in our call that you weren't aware of that. You were aware of that, made aware of that afterwards, right? So obviously, it's not your fault that we're in this position, but it's the city's money. And so I was just trying to get to the root cause of why we are having to pay $14,000 and whom was responsible for not giving us that information so that you could have made a decision based on that. Because had you known that, had you known that, and you would have still proceeded with hiring your own attorney, I would be absolutely no vote for you today because that's ridiculous, right? Why would you not go through our insurance policy to do, you know, I mean, it's the same thing that we all have to do. And I understand it's your livelihood, and so you're at a different, whole different level. I get it. Now, I read the ethics opinion on the whole thing. And, you know, listen, I'm not an attorney. But looking at it from the outside in, you know, to me, it doesn't look good. It's just not a good look in general. But look, like I said, you know, I think you're a man of integrity, and honestly, I'm not questioning that. But I am questioning why we're here and why you didn't know the process. And I think, based on the information that I've gotten so far and the conversations that I had with the manager and the conversations I had with attorney, in my opinion, I think our attorney dropped the ball on this. And I think the, you know, he's known, I mean, he told me on our call, and he mentioned it tonight again, that he's made claims before prior to this, right? He's done this before for the village. I don't know for whom. I didn't ask.
No, that's not accurate.
That's not what you told me, Brad?
No, 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 not that. The claims that we had made to the carrier were after the mayor retained, retained.
But you told me you've done this in the past for someone else, and that you couldn't remember whom it was. That's what you said. Al was on the call. But anyway, regardless, you were the one that's been speaking to the insurance company, right? Which I also said that I think that was a bad idea. I think our manager should be the one speaking to our insurance company because there's too many people talking to different people. It should just be one person.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. So, okay, so my point here is, after all is said and done, in my opinion, you know, I think that our attorney dropped the ball and didn't give us the proper information prior to you making that decision. Because I do remember talking about legal representation on this board. And I do remember him saying that, you know, they couldn't represent us because they were in this whole mess too, that if we needed legal counsel, that we would need to get legal counsel. But they failed to tell us that there was a step, there was one step more, that you had to file a claim. So that's a problem for me. So that's a big problem for me, that we're now having to reimburse you for $14,000 when we have an insurance policy that should have been utilized, and it wouldn't have cost us, well, you know, maybe our fees would have gone up a little bit, whatever, but it certainly wouldn't have been $14,000. So that's where I find myself today. I'm very unhappy. I'm very pissed off that this whole thing is happening and that we're having to reimburse you for those expenses. And again, it's not your fault. But I'm not happy that internally, they've dropped the ball on this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please. So for the commission, this is the attorney that defended me, Dan Gilchinsky, on Zoom.
So thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. And Commissioner, I hear your concerns. I've sat in your chair, literally. I sat as a commissioner in Surfside for two years, vice mayor in Surfside for two years. I know exactly where you're coming from when there's a failure of process, and I hear the concern. But I've represented a lot of elected officials over the last 25 years in these types of proceedings. And I'll tell you, you know, when you make the claim, turn it over to an insurance carrier, they take their sweet old time. You know, they'll take up to 30 days to review it. They'll take another two weeks to 30 days to assign an attorney. And then the attorney is usually, for something like this, a sort of junior attorney without tons of experience, who takes another two, three weeks to figure out which way is up and what to start doing. And by then, the initial, and to me, the crucial step in these ethics commissions investigations will have already transpired. To me, the key to handling these types of cases is a knockout punch before it gets off the ground. And what I mean by that is there's an initial screening stage where an overburdened attorney, who's got tons and tons of paper from tons and tons of complaints all over the county or all over the state, as the case may be, is looking at this stuff and saying, I've got to make a recommendation on the next 30 cases to my commission in a week. And if it smells weird or looks bad, they'll make a recommendation to proceed, especially when you get something real thick that's just larded up with all sorts of wild allegations. They'll just, it's easy for them to say, proceed. And then the matter will proceed, and now the Ethics Commission has a real case on their hands. The critical step is to get to that attorney, convince that attorney that their board, there's something defective about what's been filed. In one case I had, actually, it was my own case, I argued that they never made a proper, the complainant never made a proper allegation of a specific rule of professional conduct or a specific county commission rule that I had been liable under. In Mr. Mayor Growth's case, that was my argument. I made the argument to the attorney. And the attorney told the commission, there's no jurisdiction here. So by doing that work upfront and quickly and effectively, and that means finding out who is the assigned attorney, that means calling the clerk every day until there's an attorney assigned, then calling the attorney, introducing yourself, then asking if you can send clarifying information, then putting together a package that's short but to the point and has the information that they need and sort of leading them to the path that you want them to go. If you don't make that happen in the first two, three weeks, chances are, your case will proceed. And I managed to get both of them knocked out with a very effective, on-time advocacy, knowing how the process works and knowing that I need to get in front of the attorney in each situation very quickly and make a plausible argument to them as to why they needed to recommend to their board that the matter should not proceed. Because once it proceeds, it turns into a whole ball of wax that can be, you know, a year, a year plus. And then the mayor's under an investigation, then the attorney board is looking over his shoulder, trying to figure out what's going on, and now he's got a potential ethics issue. So that work needs to happen effectively by someone who's experienced and quickly. And that will not happen in any case, in any circumstance ever, when you hand it over to an insurance company anywhere in the world. That I guarantee you.
I completely agree with you, and I don't disagree with anything you just said. Having said that, you know, the reality is that, you know, what are we supposed to do now in the future? Put a line item budget for additional attorney expenses? Is it just because Jonathan's an attorney that he has to do this? Is it something that I'm going to have to do if I ever get another ethics complaint? Is this something Dan's going to do and Ryan? This is just going to spiral out of control, in my humble opinion, if we allow this to continue to happen. I get Jonathan's position. He's an attorney. Got it. He knew he was an attorney when he got elected. And listen, you were great, and I was there and I saw you. But this is a problem. And we can, and I'm going to vote yes today, not because I want to vote yes, but because I'm going to vote yes because I think it's the right thing to do. And I think Jonathan is not responsible to be, having been put in this position. But had he known this, I would have been a no vote, period, end of conversation. Because I'm not going to, I'm not going to be spending 14, whatever thousands of dollars on a yearly basis, paying attorney's fees for commissioners or for staff or for anybody else if we have a policy in place that pays for this. I'm sorry that it's not the best policy, and I'm sorry it's a junior attorney and all of that. I get it. But it is what we have. And we're just not going to continue to, I mean, in my opinion, I'm not going to continue to vote and approve additional attorney's fees, period.
I hear your concerns. It's a good learning lesson for everyone.
I appreciate your position, and I truly do. I truly do. I appreciate what you said. And I do see the conundrum. I do. You were heard loud and clear. I can promise you that.
I'd say that I fully support this. I will definitely be voting yes on this. I do concur with Commissioner Gonzalez that I don't think the proper procedure was followed here. I think that you, Mayor, did the prudent thing with the information you had. And with your livelihood, I think you did the correct steps with the information you had. That being said, I hope that this doesn't become a slippery slope where people leverage complaints just to fight back at the village and with different grudges that they might have. And I do, you know, I would assume that if they go through the proper steps through the insurance carriers, that the insurance carrier would then try to recoup funds from the complainant, which is a process that is allowed through Florida law. And I just want us to continue to follow the proper procedure in the next time that this eventually happens. And we all will have to make a personal decision at that point, whether to go with the insurance carrier or go with private counsel. But I would definitely be voting yes on this one because in this situation, it is the right thing to do.
Appreciate your points.
I have very similar concerns. And actually, that's the reason at the beginning of the conversation, I asked about, where do I go next legally? That's the question. Because, you know, and I brought this as an example. It's the really, there isn't really a clear route if you are exposed to any of this for the very first time. And so you have, there's two different liabilities. There is the village being liable, and there is your personal liability. So I have all the same questions. Should we budget for this? That would be my first thing. Because if you ask me, and I mean, as you heard, there's, you know, people here reiterating, the process will be slow. By the time there was a counsel available, the decision of the ethics was already out. That puts you in a very complex situation personally. Therefore, if any of us are in that same seat, the recommendation was go and find appropriate counsel. So if that's the recommendation, but then it's up for this commission and whether you find yourself that, I like you or not, I think that is horrible, right? Because now, well, you don't agree with my stuff, and so you want to prove it next. I can't be left for the commission to feel whether it's okay to approve Mr. Samaria and not approve you. I think it's unfair for anybody coming to this position next. Nobody probably will after hearing this because you're personally liable. I mean, literally. And I think it's, someone dropped the ball. So to Gonzalez's point, whether it was the attorney, whether it was the manager, whether it was, you know, the budget season, I mean, this is not being accounted for. And we're going to get out of the pockets of residents to pay for this. My first question is, is there a process in writing moving forward for this not to happen again? We can't just, you know, renew this commission and the same thing happens, and we're dipping into the savings to pay for it. How do we prevent that? How do we make sure if we know that, I mean, it's being said right now by your attorney, the process is too long for even to get a resolution of this nature? Well, you're an attorney, and I understand it's your living. I'm not, but it's my money. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if it's $2,000, if it's 14. It matters that it's wrong because there is something not connecting here between the timeline you need to respond. So do we need to go through an insurance carrier? Or we put a budget aside that would protect in the future, you know, the commission or staff or any charter officer? Is that something to, again, I don't know the implications legally of this. I just think we can't, first, I'm in the same position. It's a lot of money. Regardless of the money, it seems wrong if we had avenues to pay for this we didn't use. How come that happened? How come that happens? That's my first question. Second is, how do we prevent it? So it might be a discussion items for us to work on the next, uh, meeting, um, and that we can establish, you know, talking to the attorney, uh, what are the recommendations moving forward, how other municipalities do it? Because if the expectation is that any commissioner in the future, us or anybody else, for any claim come forward, because I want people to understand, people can point at us and raise a concern and push through an ethics, the ethics commission. And you have to go through the process of showing them why doesn't it stand or what, you know, and they need to evaluate that and blah, blah, blah. For that, you need an attorney. So, so what do we do about that? Moving forward, how do we establish those steps? We can, we, we, we need to have something in writing that doesn't go from, you know, one firm to the other firm, that doesn't go from one manager to the other or commissioner to the other. There's gotta be something in writing, it could be part of a training, I, I mean mandated training for, you know, commissioners to come in to understand what your, you know, your liabilities are, uh, you know, what you, the, the process is for you to come forward with the situations. It's unfortunate because it's a lot of money. We pay about twenty-five hundred dollars for, uh, Commissioner Samaria, and all this adds, uh, to that. Um, you know, it, it's.
And also, I could have had attorney fees if I would have went on attorney with the ethics that was filed by his commission on me.
So I, I just wanna stay in the, within the same vote. My name was brought up, I had to do the exact same thing, I had to go and research. My first, you know, thing was, what is next? I was told I needed private counsel. Uh, next, I was traveling literally the day before, so I had to ask for an extension. I didn't have, by the time it got dropped, the ethic commission came back saying there was nothing. But I was without an attorney, I was exposed. And that can be, that, that's not okay in any, in, in any way to anybody even thinking to come into the commission, can happen.
I agree.
Yeah.
Definitely think we need to have a discussion, because like I said, I could have filed with Mines. Mines was criminal, because the allegations that were formed against me was criminal, which is a felony. And it would have cost me over, more, I think more than yours, over twenty thousand. Um, so, you know, I think we need to have some kind of a dis, discussion, either find an insurance company that is gonna work faster, I don't know, I don't know. Because I tell you right now, if anybody thinks that your complaint is the only thing that's gonna happen in the next couple of years, you guys are in for a big surprise, I'm just, I, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean it to sound hypocritical, but I agree with you. I think there should be, uh, a process in place that's a little bit more clearly delineated, um, so there's guidance.
Ordnance, I don't know, but like we, or, you know, within our budget instruct, I don't know how, again, we need to talk about it. And a discussion, I'd come back with a solution to this. This can be, nobody will push their name forward hearing that you could be liable for fourteen thousand dollars out of your money.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you completely, I think it's something that we absolutely should put on for discussion for, for next, uh, next month's meeting, so we can try to find kind of a, a more bright line way on how everyone in this village would approach this sort of scenario. Yeah, and I think that that's probably the start.
I just wanna make one last thing clear, that the only reason that I'm voting for this is because you were unaware of the process. Had you been aware, I would have voted no, just so you, just to be clear. And in case somebody else is gonna come up here now and say, well, you gave it to Jonathan, no. Everybody's now clear that there is a process to, in place to, to file a claim through the insurance company, and they will assign you an attorney. So, just to be clear, we, I, this is the only yes vote you guys are getting from me. I understand.
But that to the point, if I can ask, so what if you're hearing that the process takes longer than sixty days?
Well, I don't know that, so that's, that's a question that Al is gonna have to figure out, right? So if it's.
Saying, is, is it something?
I didn't hire an attorney for this particular case, I was, I was part of this whole scenario. Because I knew that I had done absolutely nothing, so I had nothing to fear.
I didn't either, but that's the thing, so what if?
But he's an attorney, so he had, he's, he's, he's gotta cover his butt, right? It's, it's different. What are they gonna do to me? I, I mean, well, okay, but you got an ethics complaint, whoop-de-doo, okay? But I knew that there is nothing there was gonna find against me, because it was, I didn't do anything, so. Uh, but to your point, I think that that's one of the first things that we need to clarify, right, with the insurance company, right? So, once you're notified, what is, what is the timeline here to assign an attorney? Because, you know, we're hearing things up here, but we really haven't spoken to the, to the insurance. So, so that's the first thing. So, once we notify you, what is the timeline to get an, an, an attorney assigned to this situation? If you don't like it, then you have the option to go out and hire your own attorney at your expense, not at this village's expense.
I agree, I think that needs to be clarified part of the conversation, yeah.
I, I think that that probably makes the most sense, to say, you have an option here, which we will pay for, and if you choose to forego that option, then the village will not be reimbursed.
Because that's, that's the last thing, that's the thing I was thinking, just what you were saying. As I was against paying you fourteen thousand, because I say, why didn't you go to our insurance company? You heard me say, that was my first statement, didn't we have an insurance company? That terrorist, if you decide to use your outside attorney, then you should have to pay for it.
I think that, I, I would be interested in hearing, uh, you know, from, from Brad and from the manager when we put this on for discussion to say, is this the way other municipalities do it? Because I think that, that would be kind of a guiding, a guiding light for us to do.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna forestall anyone on any further discussion that they may have on the topic, because I wanna be completely, completely and clearly transparent and open with all of you, because, um, I appreciate everyone just considering this. Uh, it was, you know, not an easy thing for me to put on and, and ask from this commission, so. Uh, I appreciate everyone, even just entertaining, uh, the, the item. Um, is there any other, is there any other discussion or any other questions that anyone wants to ask about the item before we move forward? Okay. Um, all right, so, uh, at this.
Question, so I'm thinking this, as you pushing this through. So you're needing approval of this now, or can we have our conversation first?
About, conversation about what?
About, uh, you know, how, I'm trying to understand, is this something that the, um, that we have to pay out of our pocket? Is this something that the insurance? I mean, there is no way we can push through the insurance, even if we have the conversation with them, I'm saying bring them over and?
It's my understanding that.
Nothing can happen.
Back, they will assign from point A going forward, but not turn around and reimburse.
Okay, and so did you at some point reach out to them, or there was no starting point?
It was, I didn't learn about the coverage until after, I had already retained counsel, and he had already started representing me.
That's what I figured, yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right, so, uh, I'd ask at this time for, uh, votes from the commission on the resolution?
Aye.
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 So notwithstanding the, the opinion of the ethics, uh, commission on my lack of conflict of interest, um, given that we have four votes in favor, I'm gonna go ahead and abstain. Uh, listen, to this commission, I, I very much appreciate the support, and I appreciate the, the candor and the objectivity.
Let's just be sure that, that discussion item is on the next meeting.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Manager, uh, and I'm gonna go ahead, uh, Mr. Gilchinsky, thanks for being with us, um.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Al, could you please, uh, make a note to put on a discussion item for, uh, the December item, uh, insurance coverages and, and, I guess insurance coverages for, for representation of village officials and village employees, as well as, uh, uh, kind of SOPs for how and when council would be appointed and how and when, um, the village would reimburse any fees? Or just kind of a general discussion on that? And Brad, on, and if you wouldn't mind, in advance of that discussion, would you be able to take a look at some other municipalities' procedures on, on how they, how they do just that?
I'll see what I can find.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would you want our insurance carrier, representative from the insurance carrier there to answer any of these questions about delays or?
I, I think that that would be helpful, certainly.
All right.
If they can be available, that would be helpful to have them aboard. Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so, uh, that's the last of our resolutions. So our first item on old business, um, Commissioner Amzur's, is your discussion item on, um, TNVR partnership?
Yes, let me just access that, please. We have twenty minutes, okay. All right, so this should be relatively quick. Um, so I'm trying to, uh, have the village somewhere, um, engage with the county on the program that already exists and that is available for everybody to use. Um, I did reach out to the county to see, um, how they would, this would look like. And basically, they said it's a simple process for us to move forward, we just need collaboration with staff, code, police, public works, so they can share where the colonies are located, um, and create a base map. Because with that, uh, they're able to come into the village and do a mobile TVNR. So for those that don't know what this is, this is a, this proven method. It's the only method that's been, um, highlighted as a, as a, one that works, and it takes years. It doesn't take one time, it doesn't take two times, it doesn't take one or two years. In Miami Beach, there was an overpopulation happening, major, ma, major issue, and it took about twenty years to fix. So it's not something we're gonna solve, solve here us, and it's not gonna be them coming one time and fixing it. But the idea is that it's a kickoff for people to understand that there's ways they can fix the issue of cats. Community cats is an issue per se in many places. The, the county spends a lot of money trying to, to do, uh, well. Um, and they put those services at our disposal for no additional money. We're not cooperating in any way with them, they use that, uh, what they have, the resources to come and do it. So all I would need is just to connect with police, code, staff in general, to get access to any complaints, any corners, you know, from the police department. If there's been, you know, a sighting of specific areas. I know we've had the issue of poison in the village. What area was that, so we can highlight it as an, as a problem, which I'm thinking that's what it was? And then what other areas? I did come to, to, to read and ask, um, one of the questions was, some, couple of years ago, we passed a resolution, or the majority of the commission passed the resolution. I was very much in a position with related to how we treat, uh, community cats in the village. Since then, has been zero claims against that ordinance. Nobody has ever came forward to make a complaint. Right? Because that was unenforceable, that's the truth. Uh, nothing, you could chase a cat to know who, whose house it belongs to. So, the, the, this is the first time we can do something that is a hands-on with the county on an efficient way that is already been working in other places. So all I would need is for the commission to be okay with putting those assets in place, staff to engage, uh, directly with, uh, so, you know, with, with animal services. And, and then from a resident engagement, collaborate, because a lot of them wanna move forward. I mean, this is an opportunity for them to help. A lot of people that are community feeders, whether we like it or not, they do exist. And so, um, we need to embrace and see if they can help. We cannot call animal services unless those cats are hungry. Cats are not gonna come out to be trapped unless they're hungry, so we need to work with the community on this, so we need to advertise for this. Community event, again, bring people, we can do a, you know, adopt a cat day. I mean, we can do several events, that's to be worked in, in collaboration with the county. Then the sweep happens, it, is it ongoing? I put it as a question, hopefully the, the county can address this three times in a row. And then we can assess a certain budget, come the budget season, to do an additional one. Maybe this suggests twice is enough based on the community of cats, I don't know. They, they will be assessing how big of a problem we have. And the la, last but not least, a major one is education and outreach. I don't know if you saw that some of residents put together a video about what not to do, about leaving poison outside, it's not only bad for other pets, um, but it's also a problem for any kid, any adult, anybody lingering around. So, education about this, they have tons of stuff, they can co, collaborate, we can put logos, you know, in, in, in coordination with the county, and we can spread the word, website, app, and all of that. So that's what I'm asking, is just your, um, agreement that we're moving this, um, sort of efforts around this happening. The next step will me, for me to just help, uh, the village manager and coordinate with the county and ensure that we're moving this forward. And on my behalf, I'll be doing engagement with the residents, those that have reached out to me when the ordinance was passed. A lot of people kind of reaching out for, uh, wanting to participate. So my, my job here will be to promote it as much as I can.
Yeah, agreed, um, fully support it. So I guess the, the, the request that is from, direction from the commission to do what you just said.
Yes.
Uh, and then ask, uh, and provide direction to the manager to, to, uh.
Just to work in collaboration.
I do have one thing, Commissioner, you said that it takes years for this to.
Yes.
Effective, so three sweeps sounds great, but I think it should be something we renew annually. Uh, maybe we could provide direction to the manager to, uh, enter in, to see if, if the county would be okay with entering an MOU or an ILA.
That'd be great.
Uh, that we can renew annually, that they will.
Yes.
These services three times a year, twice a year, whatever they're okay with putting in writing. And that was something we can vote on, we can be transparent about it, we can, we can say what their responsibilities they're, they're willing to offer us. And we can continue to renew it, so that way it's not something that just happens this year, and then we forget about it, to ask for next year, we can continually renew it every year.
Absolutely.
If that's the only way it's effective, is we gotta go do this for twenty years, then let's put it in writing, and let's keep renewing it a year after.
That would be the hope, and, and, and then, you know, again, not something that's gonna change day to night. And I wanna make sure people get this, we're not gonna fix cats jumping on cars. We're not gonna fix, uh, I mean, we, there is so much we can do, and we do this by vaccinating and preventing those cats to continue to spread. That's it. And then adoption, hopefully, and then slowly we'll see, uh, the impact, but I'm all in for that, yes. Thank you, that's it.
So I think that's consensus, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Um, all right, great. Uh, so our new business then, uh, moving on to new business, we have our fourteen, fourteen D was the one we moved, so we have A, B, and C. So fourteen A is our first one, this was the change of the date, uh, for the special commission meeting to do the attorney interviews. All right, it's my understanding that you're gonna be avail, unavailable for the date that we originally. So what date were you, did we, what, what was the original date?
Eighteenth.
Nineteenth?
Eighteenth.
I have it down for the eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
So when are you gonna be out of town? What about the twenty-fourth? That's the Monday, it's a Monday. The twenty-fourth work for, for everyone else?
School that day.
Uh, November twenty-fourth. Would you say no? Let's not, let's not do that.
It's also Thanksgiving week that week.
Yeah, I, well, so I thought Monday is kind of close enough, but totally understood, the rest of that week, I think, is kind of off limits. Friday night?
That is the, uh, luncheon here.
Oh, the, the holiday luncheon.
Holiday, so, okay, I got, yeah, you're right. That's lunch.
What we could do, I mean, the, the following, the following Wednesday, the, or the following, well, the following Tuesday is our December commission meeting. Um, how long did we anticipate this was gonna take us? Yeah, we, we did.
No, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Mr. Manager.
So I, I think you said, uh, fifteen-minute presentation and then fifteen minutes for questions and answers.
Okay, so it's not happening on the second?
We were gonna, we were to space some forty-five minutes apart, just in case you went over.
What about December four? It's a Thursday. That work?
Number four works for me.
Yeah, good? December four, it's a Thursday.
Not available first week.
What about December eight? It's a Monday, it's the following Monday, it's only three days later.
Is it a, a working day?
It's a Monday. December eight, it's a Monday? We got, we got nods, yes? That okay with everybody? December eight it is? We, we, uh, yeah, we, six, you beat me to it. Well, well. Okay, December eight at six o'clock, okay.
Al, how far apart did you say? I heard forty-five minutes, I hope that's not.
I think you meant forty-five minutes slot per firm.
Right, so we're gonna, um, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna, fifteen minutes for a presentation, fifteen minutes for question and answer, but we're just gonna schedule them 45 minutes apart, just in case you go over. So they're not, there's no run over.
Now I understand, thank you.
Okay. Never. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to verify, that begins at 6:00 PM, right?
Sorry, go ahead, Al.
That begins at 6:00 PM on the December eighth.
6:00 PM on December eighth, correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, great, so that's fourteen A. So our next item, Commissioner, I'm sorry, this one, sorry, I don't want to, I know your scheduling. Fourteen B, which is the discussion on the ILA, so this is your item.
Yes, so I was just here nearly a year ago, the village entering, I have to read it because I don't remember where. The village entering into an interlocal agreement with the county, granted the, the village authority to add, address certain traffic and safety issues. While a formal process from budget into execution may take another year, many residents are requesting immediate attention to specific streets or corner. Staff is asked to outline how corners are currently being assessed, what data is being used to prioritize areas and how the village might respond in the short term. For example, through a town hall led by the chief to share progress, gather input, begin data collection, explore interim measures, aim at improving pedestrian and vehicular safety in the village. This comes about at some point where there was the interview for the chief of police. I think it was to, at that time, acting police Rosero that I came for. And I said, listen, there is a movement of people having concerns about certain streets, specific, you know, areas where they're asking either for a speed bump or, you know, something be done for the safety, whether people were, you know, turning around on the median and, you know, speeding was happening, that's at least what they can see. And so the question came about what's happening, you know, and I, and I put the, I think I told you this, my first item was speed bumps at some point. So that has been an issue rotating for a while. Now we have an ILA and we have the opportunity to place those speed bumps. I had asked the manager, actually, this was, I think, I have to check the address. And I think Albert, I don't know if you remember, but he answered, this was within his purchasing power to do. But that, we never ended up doing it. I think it was $250 or $300 for a speed bump. I don't want to say I'm a hundred percent that speed bump is a solution. All I'm saying is, what are we telling people in the meantime? What I would hate to happen is this, from now until this ILA is in practice, traffic study is done, we have some elements in place, we have another accident on the same streets that have been reported to be an issue, and then people had been requested, so those elements to be put in place. Just because we've been talking about for two years. As you heard, the grant was supposed to be here in January 2024. And it's December 2025, almost, around the corner. So we can't have another year, two years to have something tragic come our way. So I want a proactive approach before we hit the road and implement measures after a traffic study, after the grant has been given, and so on, and so on. So what I'm hoping to have the conversation with the commission is what can we do? My approach was, we could have, and this is something, you know, I ran over the phone with the chief just to share my thoughts. This is what people are sharing, you know? Can we put together maybe something where the police engages and tells them what the operatives have been doing? You have just mentioned that there's less traffic issues. I mean, at least they require you to be putting people in handcuffs, right? So hopefully that remains the same way. It is, that's testimony to the effort. We need to make sure we address that with the residents. People need to know that this is happening. And I think it's an opportunity to touch base on, are there specific corners still of issue now that we have an ILA? Is it something temporary we can do? And an example I'll give is, again, my corner, I have a speed bump. It was requested by a bunch of residents and it was placed under a pilot. Whatever that might mean, I don't know. The same situation happened some other place in the village, another resident mentioned. So is that pileup opportunity something for us to address in the meantime? And what would that look like so that we take this proactive approach? So that's what I wanted to bring for, for discussion to see what you guys think.
So I remember from the ILA, there were two discussions about data collection. So, and Chief, this is, this was a while ago, so for your benefit. The discussions around the ILA was that there are, that we have more control over how we can place traffic calming measures within the confines of DOT in the county. You know, we have to follow there, we adopted, you know, their, their standards. And the, the discussion, I think, where we ended up kind of dropping off was that we needed some sort of data support where we would be placing those items. And there was, it was my understanding, which may be incorrect, but it was my understanding that we could use police data as a metric by which we can deploy traffic calming measures. So by way of example, if you told us, I've got an irregular amount of speeding on this road right here and it's way above and beyond every other road, every other month, that's a metric that we can use to justify a traffic calming measure. That's, yes, if you, if you wouldn't mind. And the counterpoint to that was that, that doesn't really work. We need a, we need a full traffic study. And I think we all understand that we do need an updated traffic study, but I was looking more kind of short-term, long-term. Short-term, addressing it through other data points, long-term, through a formal and updated traffic study. Your thoughts?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
I can only tell you from experience. When I was the chief in the city of West Miami, we had, we had, at least at, when I was here, 27 traffic circles. Those traffic circles got put in, they were put in with stop signs. Several years went by and the county went ahead and threatened to fine us for putting in stop signs at traffic circles that were not permitted by them. They came out with a memo, basically an order, saying that no city or village can do anything on the street without their permission. I went and I testified at one of the hearings and I told them, please do not remove the stop signs, four-way stop signs from the traffic circles. Because in Miami, it is very typical, stop means yield. So when you put a yield sign, it means go faster. And I showed how many accidents we had even with stop signs. The following day, I get a call from one of my guys on the midnight shift telling me, I got a county truck out here pulling out all the stop signs from the traffic circles. And they went ahead and they pulled every stop sign out. And basically, they told us, you need our permission and too bad. So, you know, replace them with yield signs. There are city, city roads and county roads. City roads.
Do they have an ILA?
Yes, we did.
So then.
They still control. An interlocal agreement doesn't give you authority to do whatever you want on your street.
Because you have to follow certain specs.
You have to get their permission. They have to have a traffic study. Once the traffic study is done, they will tell you whether they're going to put a traffic light, a stop sign, a yield sign, a speed bump. They're the ones that give you the okay.
Okay, so.
Now, it's been.
I'm confused.
In a year.
About the ILA.
Again, I can only tell you from my experience. I was a witness. I had and got dressed, got in the car, went out, and basically they had orders.
So, so then, is Brad still on the call?
I am.
So how, how does that work with the ILA? I mean, we went through this interlocal agreement to get the opportunity to access to those decisions. I understand that we need to follow specifications by the county. We cannot build on sand a speed bump, right? There are certain requirements, measurements, specs to follow. And I understand there are attached to the ILA, if I'm not mistaken, what elements we are able to put in practice and what specifications to follow.
I think that's an answer for Brad.
So we could, so, yeah, yes. So the ILA, the ILA allows the village to install traffic circles, speed humps or cushions, in-street pedestrian crossing signs, raised intersections, or mid-block raised crosswalks in, in the, in the village. Stop signs are a different animal. That, that's not something that you could install under the traffic ILA that you entered into with traffic control devices such as stop signs, traffic lights, speed limit signs, those don't fall into the ILA. There's a completely different process as the chief has described for installing those items. But these traffic calming devices, right, traffic calming devices, which are the ones that I listed, the circles, humps, raised crosswalks, things of that nature. The, the village can install that without the permission of the county as long as you file, I'm sorry, follow the, the comports and requirements of, of the agreement. There has to be, as the mayor's correctly said, there, there has to be some type of study using some type of data to determine that there's a need for those traffic calming devices. And I, I would suggest, and I think this is the conversation the mayor's addressing and referring to, is that there would need to be some type of technical assistance as to what types of devices will, will alleviate whatever the issue is that's identified from the data and, and the frequency of how and where they're installed. But what the, what the ILA does is it provides the specific specifications that the traffic calming devices will look like and be designed as, without having to go to the county and say, can you approve this diagram or these specifications for a speed bump? That, that's no longer required because we, under the ILA.
Okay, so to your point of example, the stop, stop signs, of course, will have to go through the county, but other measures could be within our authority to, to implement. So I think at this stage, what I would offer the commission to think about and vote is, do you feel maybe having this first meeting? Because a lot of people come forward with complaints as, you know, traffic, but then we need, we need them here. We, we need the data kind of, you know, pushed forward. It could be an opportunity to have a town hall meeting in terms of police meeting with residents, gather data, bring everybody, what's your corner? What's the, the issue? Do you feel isn't safe? To what extent? It could, maybe there's three people and this, then can wait? You know, if that's what the majority feels. Or it could be that the three people are located within the same street. And right there is the opportunity to gather the data that you need. I think, again, I think what, how I put it here by a town hall, how I envision this is, when you have people come, that's data in itself, you know? That people coming forward saying, we need some sort of measurement, even if it's temporary, to address issues that the police might not be seeing 24/7 because you're not in the same corner 24/7. That's what I was going for.
I think it's critical to get resident input and do a, some kind of a town hall. And, and the reason for that is because you're, you're not only going to get people that want traffic calming measures, you're also going to get the others that don't want traffic calming measures, right?
The ones that are.
Yeah, the ones that don't want, yeah, the ones that don't want to see a speed bump in front of their house. So, you know, I think it's important that we hear, you know, and, and at least give them that opportunity. Like you said, they're made up, nobody might not show up. But at least they've been given that opportunity to come and, and speak their minds. So I think that's a, that's a good idea.
And you know what, to add to that, Commissioner, is the fact of feeling we're doing something for it rather than waiting for all, the entire plan to be laid down just because it's taken a while to even have this conversation. And I think we owe it to residents just to listen. And it might be, again, three show up, hopefully it's not. I mean, I hear from several of them, but again, not all of them come forward with those concerns. So it's an opportunity to, to talk about it.
So I, I agree with what you're saying. And what I think, the way that I would envision this working is that we have the chief get with the manager and talk about the format and how it would work. And the date, most of, of course, the date, you know, we've got holidays coming up, so I don't want us to, to run into any of those and then lose the opportunity to engage with citizens. But at the same time, Chief, what I might ask of you is, is if you have the ability to look at some of the data that the police has been collecting over the last couple of months. I mean, we've got them on our reports. See if there's a way, I don't know how big of a lift this would be, so I don't want to overburden you on it. But see if there's a way to aggregate it to kind of pinpoint some of the more problem areas. We know where they're going to be. You know, we, we've got the main roads, we've got six, we've got Griffin, we've got the, the highway.
Griffin.
Those, yeah, those are going to be the big ones. True, correct, yes, absolutely. But they're going to be included in, in, in the data that they have. So outside of that, the interior streets and, you know, the pass-through streets, the cut-through streets. If, if you in, within your department might be able to kind of put together a snapshot of what you're seeing and where the tickets are being issued, where the violations are occurring, where the complaints are coming from, that might start providing us with an area that we can look at. While at the same time, looking at when we might be able to have this sort of resident interaction through town hall workshop, however it may be.
That's not a problem. I mean, I can get the, the guys to, I mean, the tickets themselves will show, you know, where, where we have the, the most problems. What I will ask is that maybe Brad find out and make sure, because I've seen this war before in the county commission. And sometimes I've, I've seen where they have not approved these speed bumps.
Right.
And then speed bumps get put in and then they have to be removed because they're supposed to be with brick pavers and they have to be a certain width. And when you start getting into that, now you're going from something that may cost a couple hundred dollars, like the rubber one that sits on that street, which I've seen, to something.
We're not talking about it, it does not exist. Thank you.
And then, and then it turns into a $25,000 speed bump where you have to put brick pavers and have a slope and it can't be so high where it hits the bottom of the car. Because then the village then becomes liable for all the damage that happens to any car that belongs. Yes, sir, yes, sir, we have that problem with the circles.
Hey, I think that's a, a critical point too. You know, this is, this is.
I would proffer that maybe the attorney should look into this, make sure, let's make sure before we go into an endeavor that ends up costing a lot more money than we're planning on. A, a, a simple, a simple rubber speed bump, I don't think everybody's going to be happy with that.
Correct, so, yeah, and I think that's a very valid point. We need before, because what I would hate is that you have a town hall meeting, everybody tells you what the issue is. And next, you're, you, you can meet expectations and we're just stuck with nothing moving forward. So a hundred percent, I think, what can be done? And with that understanding, having a conversation with the residents to not overpromise before we have full, you know, capabilities, money, studies done, whatever might be next. Yes.
So if, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, just, sorry, one second, Brad, go ahead, Ryan.
So I completely agree. You know, traffic calming measures is what got me to this dais over a year ago. But where we had a sticking point before, and it took me a while to find our ILA, but I'll read from it. Installation, any such traffic calming device may be installed by, on a local municipal street only after an appropriate traffic engineering study has been performed and signed and sealed by a Florida licensed professional engineer. So verbatim in there, we have to have a traffic study. That doesn't mean we have to do a traffic study of our entire village. That means we could every narrow down to some locations, we could order, ask for a traffic study of just one road, one. So I reached out to Miami Shores to see how they're doing it. They have a big push for speed bumps right now. They have the blessing of, they did a citywide traffic study. So they have suggested areas where traffic, where speed bumps, traffic calming measures are supposed to go in by their traffic study. We don't have that, that right now. Safer streets for all, hopefully will get us that. But their criteria is this traffic study asks for it on that street and two-thirds of the residents on that block say yes. They have one block right now that the traffic study is asking for it. Two-thirds of the residents do not say yes, they're not putting the, the speed bump. Just one block over, they have two-thirds of the residents saying yes. Traffic study says no, they're not putting the speed bump. So there's, there's two sides to this, resident buy-in as well as the traffic study. We don't have that traffic study, what we do have is our app. Our app already has a, a, a button in it where you can request a traffic calming measure. So even before we look for dates for a calendar for town hall, we could push out. we could push out to the residents, suggest a traffic calming measure. If we get two-thirds of the residents asking for that block or whatever number we think of, we can start talking about traffic studies on that block. That's something that we can do free of charge right now. Tomorrow, we can put a post out on our socials and say, you know, request a traffic common measure if you want, start the conversation. I was really hoping this conversation could start a long time ago and thank you, Commissioner, for, for starting it. Um, but to say we don't need a traffic, uh, engineering study, it's right there verbatim we do. I wish we did not because it, it put red tape and it put costs in this. Uh, also Miami Shores, they have piggyback contracts that we could, or a contract we could piggyback off. But the price was around $10,000, all-in installed signs. Yeah, remember there's also, you know, speed hump coming in this way, signs and all those. But in, it was around $10,000. The, the manager had sent, uh, the prior police administration over to look at them. And that's, that's a kind of sticker shock there, but, um, I'm all in. I'm all for it. I think we need to get that resident data because we, right now, to start narrowing down these locations and, and see if, if we don't get two-thirds of residents saying anything on one block, then we know, we don't have resident buy-in.
Yeah. Another, another thing that we talked about, Ryan, and I don't think you need an, an I L A or L, L L A or whatever the hell the thing is going, um, is, uh, s- uh, speed limit signs, right? We talked about that at one point because there's a lot of streets in, in this, uh, village that have no speed limit signs, zero speed limit signs. And while that might not, uh, slow people down, I mean, at least they're, they're there visually too. Uh, there are even avenues that have like hardly no speed limit signs. So that's something that we don't need to, I don't think we need to go to the, you need to go for the, you need to, you need a traffic study to put a speed limit sign?
Speed limit signs have to be at a certain distance, one from the other.
Okay, but you don't need a traffic study to do that. I'm assuming not.
I believe you need permission from F D O T.
I think so. I, I think what's mentioned about that, um.
I know because some of the.
They have liability. I think you, uh, you put anything next to the side of the road, they're going to want to seize, you know, documents as to why it's there and how it's there and things like that. It's a curb liability. But I, I, I completely concur with you, Commissioner, that, you know, that's something that as we look at our, our road system as a whole, Safer Streets For All is going to look at that for us and, and identify, you know, our lack of sidewalks, our lack of speed bumps, our lack of, uh, speed limit signs, things like that. Um, I, I agree. But getting the resident data, you know, as simple as it's on our app, just press the button. I did it. I tested it out to make sure it works. It works. Um, I think it's, 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 uh, needed. It's something we definitely need. Uh, and it can only help our traffic, uh, or, sorry, Safer Streets For All study. That's data that we can just hand over to them and they can take a look at it.
Yeah.
So.
Is that recommend, I'm sorry.
I.
Trying to wrap it in.
I, we were doing the same thing. So I, I think that we, we got a couple of, of three-pronged approach here. I think one, I think, Ryan, your idea of, of putting something out to the residents via the app, the notification via the email list that says, you can, we're, we're starting to put together traffic data from the residents. Utilize the app, utilize this section of the app. Um, I would still personally, I would love to see some of the data coming out of your department, chief. See where you're seeing out of the hotspots because I think that helps guides it. Uh, and then after we look at those things, we look at, um, we look at dates for kind of that town hall to continue to get resident feedback. But we've got it, we've got to do those things before we get to that point. Um, to, to the point about the traffic calming measures and where we're allowed to employ them, it sounds like we're stuck. I remember we had this discussion. It's all kind of coming back to us now because we did this a lot. Um, and so I think we are kind of stuck there. I mean, I will still reach out to D O T and refresh this because I've had several conversations with them years ago about it. Um, so I'm happy to kind of kick the, kick the tires there and see what I can find. Um, but I think that those are the things that we start with.
So the app will require some time for people to know that that's going if it's data pulling. And then, so that needs like a month, two month, I don't know, the people kind of submitting has a timeframe to collect the data. And I was going to say that a lot of people might not have the app. So what opportunities that might, you know, come forward to the police department, there might be a form they can fill out if they have to address something. I'm just giving ideas as to how we can address also those that don't have access to the app. Uh, there is next door, there is a website, you know, to pull a form. But I love the idea of using our, our opportunities for free that exist to capture. And then when you have people engage, hopefully with an email and number, then we can do a meeting and showcase and be like, maybe the answer is we will have to wait two years. That's what I'm saying. So maybe that's the answer, but I want us to provide some sort of a feedback at this stage. So I think that would help.
Commissioner, maybe if I, uh, I propose a, a path forward is I think, I think I heard we, no one has intention to schedule a town hall before the holidays is over. I think we'll get through the holidays.
Yes.
Maybe, uh, direction to the manager, to staff is to push out that occasion. You, you can utilize the app to request a traffic calming measure. We'll put it for a discussion item in January, uh, just to assess that data. If we're not getting enough data, we can always push it to February to our strategic planning. And then we can utilize that data to then.
Love that.
A step forward.
I think February is going to be.
Hall to confirm the data or whether we just didn't get enough and it's a mute point at that point. I think that give, give staff two months, you know, or, or more to get through the holidays. Give residents plenty of time to digest the, the message they got and to request those, those locations. And then we'll digest that in the new year.
I think that's.
It works?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief, thank you very much. Commissioner, thanks for reviving this one for us.
Problem?
So, uh, I know, um, Commissioner, the last discussion item is, is the, is, is yours as well. Uh, we only got a couple of minutes left. Um, very, very quickly, I know, I don't want to rob you of the opportunity to introduce it, but I, I.
I don't want to rush it either. So should I ask for 10 more minutes?
Uh, well, I, I was going to see if we could maybe jump out ahead of it. I know you were talking about what we, one thing, we, we had an approved evaluation form that we use in the past that the commissioner all agreed to utilize going forward. Um, I'm open to having those discussions about changing it. But two, um, I think what you were asking was six months is in December, which you're technically correct because he signed his, uh, manager signed his agreement for full-time employment in August. It was retroactive back to June, which would then correct, put six months into December. But I, we really had a very substantive conversation about the manager, his performance, his position in August. So December would really only put us, what, four, four months or so into that. Um, so while you're technically correct, it does go back to June. We had a lot of discussions about June, July and August. Um, so what I would say, would it make more sense to look at this in February when we've been six months from the last time that we did an evaluation of sorts?
Can I introduce my item so that you can get context?
Sure.
This, because, um.
Commissioner, just so I don't interrupt you when you're talking, uh, motion to extend 10 minutes.
All right.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Goodbye, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez.
So I, so we did, oh, hold on, I opened the wrong. So my main thing is, so I wanted to understand two things. A, I had the date for December as our contract started in June. It was retroactive. And the second thing was, okay, what am I evaluating? Am I using the same evaluation that we've had in the past? You just, at least on your end, uh, that, that's what we agree. And then the other is on what goals. The manager was supposed to come to us with defined goals, haven't just, had discussed this with each commissioner. Did this happen with each one of you? Did you have a conversation about these goals? I didn't have it. So I don't, what, what goals are we evaluating upon? Uh, this, this process? And why didn't that even happen? I mean, that was supposed to be a couple of weeks after we signed the contract that we were going to have this conversation. And I just want to understand if I'm the only one asking this question or this conversation has happened with each one of you except for me.
I think the way that I had understood it at the time, um, was that there was a slate of items in front of the manager. I, and I, it may have been, I think maybe in the way that it was communicated may have, there may have been a, maybe a miscommunication. This is, again, my own personal interpretation, um, was that there was a slate of items in front of the manager uh, that he had been working on, that he'd been working on since, uh, the beginning of calendar 2025. Um, I had the interpretation that these were the things that he would continue to work on and that our budget would set priorities, our C I P would set priorities. Uh, I don't know that now, again, that might, that's my own personal interpretation of, of what the manager's goals are moving forward. Um, it's to advance, advance those items that, you know, that we've, we've had discussion on, but, um.
With discussion on when?
Uh, during, throughout the course of, of his role as interim and moving through budget and C I P and strategic planning. Um, and that's, so I, this is my own mental kind of checklist, I guess. Certain things that we've identified in the past of infrastructure, roads, you know, we talked a lot about that. We've got something on our agenda that we approved tonight for road paving. We've started those things. So this is kind of where it's, again, this is in my own head and this is where I see the thread going. I take these items that we've discussed in the past and I'm kind of mentally tracking where they're going as they come before us. So again, I, I.
I.
Probably different, um, but that's, that's just my own personal understanding, interpretation of, of what the manager's goals are and how he's going about.
Mr. Mayor, if I will, um, if you refer back to the manager's, uh, employment agreement, it spells out exactly the evaluation process and what the form is, what we are to evaluate them on, uh, how to do it. It's all spelled out there, uh, and it's very specific. If you see that we, uh, evaluate them on the goals that are established through strategic planning. So through strategic planning, we established goals that we adopted when Herb came and presented them. I know, Commissioner, you had some questions of what those goals were, um, but that, that was the adopted strategic goals for the, for fiscal.
When were those approved? By what vote? So here's the thing. So you've, you've heard my.
The meeting.
Meeting which was not under sunshine.
Um, and that's in his agreement that will, that's our evaluation. So if we are to.
There's no goals. I understand what you're saying, but Ryan, let me, let me read to you the minutes that were added of that meeting to this agenda, which I didn't finalize. The commission discussed and agreed to implement a six-month evaluation for the city manager first year, followed by an annual evaluation thereafter. They decided to ask the manager to present his six-month goal at the August meeting. The commission also agreed to use the same evaluation form they had previously used, which adequately addresses the requirement, section 14 of the contract. They confirm that individual commissioner evaluations are to be conducted in person with each commissioner, meeting with the manager to discuss their completed evaluation from the last 10 days prior to the public meeting. So we, we talked about having him come forward with us. He asked of me to provide what my objectives were and I did. And I haven't heard since. The idea was that it was agreed and then the meeting is to be heard on video. I mean, I don't know. It's, it's on the minutes here. We told the manager to come back with those goals so that we can make the assessment. Because that's my question. My only question is, what am I evaluating against? Because we had to have a combined set of goals. He was to present to us, which it's fine. If he comes forward and says, this is my goals and this is what I would like to be measured against, we needed to agree as a commission that we all are on the same basis. Otherwise, on December, you're going to evaluate one thing. He's, what are we evaluating against? I have issues about February being dictated, that meeting that happened not in, under the sunshine as something that everybody voted on to move forward to evaluate the manager. That is incorrect. It shouldn't happen that way. And it was addressed during our negotiations that it was going to happen through individual conversations to be had. And I think it's appropriate for any, any staff member to understand what their goals are that I as a manager need or supervisor in this case, need to evaluate. So that's what I'm asking. I'm asking what goals are you guys going to evaluate against? At, at least I need to be on the same page because I don't know what those are. And again, the ones that were presented were in February when he was an interim manager. That's why in June, when we approved, we said, you need to come back to us and, and we had issues of performance. It was serious issue of, of performance. I just brought up an issue of public records. And the fact that it's not being contemplated, even what was discussed as a commission is a problem. So what, how do we move forward so that I can provide feedback?
Commissioner, you and me have different regulations of, uh, the February meeting. I thought it was a great meeting. I thought we, uh, established goals for the fiscal year and I know the manager's working off those goals. I've seen many times he refers back to that list and, and he, uh, used that as his marching orders for the year. And I think that he's doing a great job at that. And that is, will be how I will evaluate him is on those goals.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. So you're evaluating on those goals. Okay. Can I have some feedback?
Agreement.
Rest. I just want to understand why you're evaluating him on, on this, uh, December, February, whatever the majority decide. I'm, I'm fine with whatever date.
Uh, so mine's a little bit more broad, I think. It's a little bit more broad because the role of the manager is, is more than just achieving these things, uh, which is why we use that, that, that form in the past.
Yes.
Um, because it's, you know, it's things like communication with residents. It's things like you're working with staff. It's, it's a general kind of larger view of how is this individual in the manager's seat performing? Um, so I, I would look back at that because that provides each of us an opportunity to say, how is the manager performing in, in all functions of the role of a manager? Uh, but also on that point, to the point of, I look back at our strategic planning session back in February. I look at it in conjunction with our budget and our C I P because my recollection of that meeting was legislative, with priorities, was not these, one, two, three, four, these things are getting done. It's where can we focus? There's a lot we have to do, but where can we focus? Uh, and infrastructure was one of them, uh, which I remember very clearly, like we're going to try and work on those. We talked about bonding, you know, to get them all done, but it was, we need to make progress on some of these items. Um, and that was, I think echoed in, you know, I'm looking at our C I P from our budget period now. You know, these are, are projects that we as a commission have agreed, we want to move these things forward. We don't move these things forward. The manager moves these things forward. So I look at our C I P and I say, what in this C I P has he worked on? What has he achieved? What's the status of them? And then generally, generally all around, uh, because again, I feel like those items that were set forth in the February, you know, kind of priorities meeting are really reflected in the C I P. Uh, and then again, all around, um, how is this individual performing in the role of the manager? So I think that it's, it's not just a one or the other. I think it's kind of an all-encompassing, we are evaluating the individual who is our village manager. So I would see it as, I would see it as, as personally, that's how I would be evaluating.
Okay. So each one of us come with their list, basically, their approach. We're not going to have a one.
I think that's fine. I mean, we have to find some cohesion between how we're doing it. Otherwise you're going to get five different approaches and five different evaluations. And one person's can be great and one person's can be, well, I didn't evaluate on any of those. So I think what we should do is, um, you know, respectfully, I, I agree with you. Six months from the effective date of June is technically December, but we've had a lot of discussion about the manager and his, his performance in August, which was only a few short months ago. So I think that the way for us to do it is let's set an agenda item for December where each of us is going to come and, uh, we'll let Art know. Where each of us will come with, these are the things that I think we should be evaluating manager on. We're going to have to come to some cohesion on what we're going to do. Uh, we come up with that form, the way that we've done in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we set a date and a time to do it. I think that's probably the only way we're going to agree.
And I'm with you. I think it's a combination of the form we already have, which will be by contract, how we evaluate it. And that's very clear to me. I wasn't sure about the six months because it's a short period. Obviously you're not going to measure against a C I P. I mean, it's just started. So there is a broader spectrum to have. So I just want to be in coherence with everybody and not come with a list of things are not measured. I was only part of one day of that meeting, um, where you all met. Again, I'm not okay with it not being in the sunshine. You all shouldn't either. It's by law required. So, uh, you know, it's needed to have the conversation publicly, agreed on certain terms and move forward as a commission. I think that's my, I think that's where you're heading and I'm a hundred percent on board with that. And I'm okay with it being February or March. It, it doesn't need to be December. In my perspective, since it was signed in June, it was supposed to happen in, in December, but I'm okay with pushing it after.
And I think to, to the point that Commissioner Huntington made is that there is some description within the evaluation section of this agreement that says specifically what we evaluate and how we evaluate it.
Mm-hmm.
So we can compare that to the form that we've used in the past.
Yeah.
Be part of it because there can be a lot more things.
Well, it has to be, it has to be part of it. It's contractually part of it. So we make this part of it and say, how does, how does our evaluation process stack up to what's in here to make sure that it conforms to it? So I think that that's probably the way we have to do it. And, you know, Brad, we're likely going to, not likely, we're almost, almost certainly going to need your opinion to make sure that we are, you know, adhering to the contractual requirements of section 14, performance goals and evaluation processes, uh, to make sure that the process by which we evaluate the manager conforms to the contract.
That's not the only thing that we evaluate them on.
Well, no, it's, 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 this is, it's broad.
Yeah.
It's, it's broad.
That's why I, I was hoping to get to, uh, somewhere, but that, that's it. I think that's good. If we have it as an item, come back for, for us to discuss.
I think that's probably the best way to do it and we will, we'll, we'll come with our ideas on, on how to set that form and, and what benchmarks we use. And it'll have to conform to, to this version or this.
Also wanted to be where we don't have to only follow that. Because the last time I was on the commission, I did evaluation on the city manager. I basically didn't do it, follow step-by-step by form. It, it was done basically. My interview with him, talking with him, how he handled other stuff as Commissioner's saying. So I don't want it to be a straight form.
There won't be narrative places for, for people to provide their, their interactions. I mean, that's part of.
Spells out that there's a. Spells out that there's a evaluation, a portion where you can write in.
Yes, correct. And I think the first sentence of subsection B of that paragraph talks about where you can put in your your kind of narrative evaluation.
Commissioner, it it spells out that you you have a meeting with the the manager to go over your evaluation. So that's another great opportunity for you to go over your interview points and go over with him, and then you can present those publicly afterwards.
But also you presented publicly, because that's what I did, I presented publicly.
Uh, for me, I'm completely fine with pushing it back. I think, you know, I think you're playing with a stacked deck with, and he's operating under a budget that wasn't his. He, you know, he uh, inherited a budget that was in disarray. And I think giving him as much time as as he can under the new budget just reflects a more accurate representation of the manager. Uh, so I'm completely fine with pushing it to a February tentative date with a December discussion item. And I I personally take it as a lesson for our strategic planning come this February that I'm super excited for, uh, to establish those goals and objectives at that meeting, so that this is more.
Next one.
You know, this this agreement wasn't in place then, so now we all can take a lesson and say, okay, let's take five minutes in that in that meeting, establish those goals now.
It'll be for its next evaluation.
You don't have to do this next December.
Perfect. It's ten thirteen.
Thank you. That was in, appreciate.
Okay, so we'll come forward with December on the, on those items. Um, all right, so we have a couple of items that we will request be placed on our December agenda, and at this time allows for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.